Noticing the time is 7:05, I think we'll get started. This is the Westwood Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, May 23, 2017. Welcome to the meeting. I'm Trevor Lobenstein. I'll be chairing this meeting. All meetings are recorded by Westwood Media Center. If there's anyone else in the room who would like to record the meeting, could you please identify yourself so the audience is aware? Seeing none, as a reminder, please turn off your cellphone ringers. The agenda is available at the back of the room. The meeting will follow the order on the agenda, and the meeting will be civil, and all people will be treated respectfully. The format of the meeting will be when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium to present their application to the board. The board will proceed to staff comments, the board members will ask questions of the applicant, and then the public will be given an opportunity to comment. When it is time for public comment, period, the chairman will call those wishing to speak to the podium. And once at the podium, please identify yourself by stating your name and your address for the record. All comments and questions shall be directed through the chair. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. I understand, Abigail, there are a couple of changes to the agenda?
Yes. Items four and five on your agenda, these are the two preliminary subdivisions for what's being called Alexandria Way and Camille Way. That's 277 through 283, 291-295 Washington Street and 9 School Street, as well as 266 through 278, 280 and 283 Washington Street and East Street. You received today, I'll hand this down to the chairman for the record, a request from both applicants, which are the property owners. These were joint applications that were filed by the town and Petrusiello Properties. These subdivision plans were submitted for the purposes of starting the process to obtain a zoning freeze. They were submitted prior to town meeting, but since the zoning amendments that affected these parcels did not pass at town meeting, they are now asking that the applications be withdrawn without prejudice.
Okay.
So you should vote on this request for both subdivisions to be withdrawn.
Okay. So are there two letters or just this one letter?
There's one there for you to read, for the record, and then we do also have, I think, one from Attorney Zaka, and he's also in the room tonight, too.
Okay. Should I read this aloud?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. This is dated May 23, 2017, to Abigail McCabe, the town planner, who sits to my right. Regarding preliminary subdivisions, Camille Way and Alexandria Way, withdraw without prejudice. Dear Abigail, this is to confirm that the board has decided that in view of the fact that the two articles proposing to modify the terms of the overlay zoning district affecting Petrusiello Properties' proposal for Islington Center were not adopted, it would join the request to withdraw the preliminary subdivision applications for Camille Way and Alexandria Way without prejudice. Sincerely, Michael Gillette, the town administrator. So I think at this point, Mike, do you have anything to add or say? It kind of sums it up in a letter, right? Okay. Am I on the right one, Alexandria Way?
Right. Both of them. The letter, it had two letters for both the applications.
All right. So maybe I'll read the second letter, and then we'll entertain a motion for the first withdrawal.
It is much longer.
Are you saying I shouldn't read it, or are you saying I should?
I think, I don't know if Mr. Zaka, if he wants to summarize the letter?
Yeah, maybe. Would you care to summarize, so I need not read all?
Good evening. For the record, Peter Zaka, I'm an attorney representing Petrusiello Properties. The town planner did a pretty good job. It was submitted primarily for the purpose of starting the process of a zoning freeze. The articles in question that were amending the Westwood zoning bylaws were not adopted at town meeting, and therefore it is our belief that nothing's really accomplished by this, and put in simple terms, no need to waste the board's time with this application. So we've requested that both preliminary subdivision plans be withdrawn without prejudice.
Thanks.
Yep.
That does it. So do we think we need to move on these things independently, or?
Yes. I think you should take two motions to withdraw each application individually.
All right. Do I?
I'll make a motion that we accept the applicant's request to remove the Alexandria Way subdivision plan without prejudice.
Yep.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes?
Dave, make sure your mic's on.
And I'll make--
There you go.
I'll make a second motion, that we accept the applicant's request to withdraw the preliminary subdivision application for Camille Way without prejudice.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The vote is unanimous, to pass.
All right. So then, again, when you get to the items on the agenda, you should just make the announcement.
So if that wasn't altogether abundantly clear, if you're here for items four and five, these have been withdrawn, but you're welcome to stay, there's plenty more coming.
Yeah.
All right. So back to item one, which is University Station Development Area B, Medical Office Building Enabling Package Project Development Review Public Meeting. Proposal for completion of roadway, drainage, utility, lighting, and landscape improvements. I trust I have someone from the applicant's team here.
Paul Sinckata with New England Development. I'm going to, it gets easier if it's okay, if I approach the screen to be able to direct attention to some of the graphics. But maybe just for starters, the purpose for our being here this evening is the board has before them an application for what's been called an enabling package. It's in the form of a PDR. And you recall at the last meeting, we explained the basic scope of the enabling package, which I'm going to review real quickly, just to refresh your memories on what's included in the enabling package, which serves Development Area B, otherwise been referred to in the past as a village area, but then spend a little bit more time talking about the park or the greenway, which wasn't presented in great detail at the last meeting. So the scope of the enabling package, I don't know if there's, if I turn it a little bit more to face, is that take from your view? The scope of the enabling package involves really primarily two different areas. One, the T configured access drive that serves what is the restaurant area and the village area, the hotel currently under construction, the proposed Brigham parcel, and then future development areas on the southern end of the village area. So it's the T access drive is one main element, and the second main element is the greenway or the park that runs north-south through the Development Area B, essentially connecting the hotel parcel and restaurant parcels down to Bridges Way, and ultimately connecting off of the southern end of the picture here, the Meadow Park, which is adjacent to the Bridges Assisted Living building. What we had talked about at the last meeting is that really the work entailed relating to the driveway, the access driveway, is completing the edge treatment on the right-hand side. There was a sidewalk that was yet to be constructed with some street trees, and then completing the bottom of the T, those elements of the drive that provide access to the hotel parcel, and then to the proposed Brigham parcel. The layout of the walkways within the parkway are shown on this drawing. There are sidewalks that are varying width through the parkway. They vary from about six feet to 10 feet. And then in addition, we'll see in a subsequent slide, that in addition to the park that is within that greenway space, there's a subsurface infiltration system, which is designed to handle the drainage from the future development area that's up along that parcel, that's up along University Ave. And then in addition, there are some other utilities that run through the parkway that provide looping and redundancy for systems that have been designed as part of the master plan. So for instance, there's a water line that travels through the parkway area. There's a drainage line that allows drainage from the future residential parcel to tie through the park and ultimately make its way off of the property, all of which is, Merrick can chime into later on, really been the subject of the master drainage plan and has been consistent with the overall drainage scheme from day one. So what we really want to do is just focus a little bit of time on the design of the park. This plan taken from your enabling package shows the layout in a little bit more detail of the walkway system through the park, and then sort of the main landscape elements within the park. Again, the primary walkway identified with a 10-foot width, starting at Bridges Way, begins here opposite, for those that are familiar with the assisted living site, opposite the flagpole, travels north, comes into a central plaza area, and then continues traveling north closer to the Brigham side of the park, and then connecting up with the crosswalks that are in that four-legged intersection right in front of the Brigham property. The idea and the design intent in the park was to provide a connection north-south so that people that are using the Gateway Park, which is up at the corner of Blue Hill and University Ave, can travel from the northerly limits of the project into this village area. Maybe they're staying at the hotel, but they can use this connector to get them down into the Meadow Park, that which is right in front of the assisted living property, and then loop back across University Ave up through the retail section. It also provides different kinds of gathering and sitting areas for those users that either reside or work or are visiting, the uses that are actually in the Development Area B, so whether they're guests of the hotel, they're people that may live in the future residential property that's down in the southeast corner of Development Area B, those people that may be employees working at the proposed Brigham property or future office space, which is envisioned to be right up on University Ave. And so the plan provides for a central plaza area, similar in treatment to the plaza area that's between Target and Wegmans. It's envisioned to be a stamped concrete, color-concrete-stamped pavement. All the other walkways will be concrete similar to the park areas up at the Gateway Park. The areas that are designated with this crosshatch are areas where the grade will be mounted and landscaped with tree shrubs, ground covers, the idea being buffering those people that are visiting the park from the adjacent parking areas or developed portions. So the mounding, as you'll see in some of the grading plans that have been provided, can be anywhere as on the order from two to four feet. So when it's color rendered up with the planting plan, John Gwad's from Shadley's with me can answer any detailed questions on some of the plant material that's been selected, but it's consistent with the plant materials that have been used throughout the development. It's been identified in the palette of materials that's shown on the plan. It's a variety of shade trees, ornamentals, and some evergreens, and then plenty of shrubs and ground cover that fill in the beds in those mounded areas. There's sort of a central lawn area south of the plaza, and then the plaza itself has seating walls, so all of the sort of free-form shapes within that central plaza area are seating walls. Some are freestanding seating walls, and others are being used to support the mounding that's put on the edges of the park. Some of the comments received in Beta's review, which I'm certain is in your package, suggest that, you know, maybe there should be an additional seating wall on the northern end of that lawn area, takes advantage of a shade tree there. Shade opportunities within the plaza that will be considered as we work the final design details out with Beta might include either furnishings in the plaza to provide shade as the trees mature over the early years, or even possibly more of a central tree that might provide a shade element right in the middle of the plaza. And then the walkway has little offshoots that are smaller in dimension that provide seating opportunities that are a little bit off of the main pathway, just for sort of resting and quiet space. In terms of other materials within the park, so we talked about the paving materials or the surface materials, the concrete and the stamped concrete similar to what's been used throughout the development. The lighting fixture will be that fixture, which has been used in the parks, both in the Meadow and in the Gateway Park. The bench and trash receptacles and bike racks are all proposed to be the same furnishings that have been used throughout the development, so that they pick up on the same language. There will be irrigation within the park, and the final design that we worked through with Beta, one of their comments was just to talk about the extent of the irrigation here, and I think that, again, the plant materials are, they're natives, they're drought-tolerant. I don't know that the intent is to irrigate 100% of this entire green area. So those areas that will require irrigation will be something that will work carefully between Shadley's office and Beta's office. At the last meeting, we talked a bit about the phasing of the construction of this parkway area as it relates to the proposed Brigham parcel and the proposed future residential parcel. So what we had described and then sort of put it into a graphic from our last meeting was just that the Phase A, which is the larger area of the park, is what's proposed to be constructed and completed prior to Brigham's initial opening of their Phase 1 building. And it would include all of the walkways that make the connection from Brigham Way down to Bridges Drive. So while it might be a little bit light, you can see that this segment of the walk is constructed, the lighting along that walk would be constructed, the benches along that walk would be constructed, and the thought is that the Phase B area would be just loaned and seeded in anticipation of what we believe to be a fairly close-trailing future development proposal. And then Phase B of the park area would be completed with the completion of the residential I think the last thing that I'd like to cover, and then we could take questions. The boundary, well, let's, so the boundary for the Brigham parcel, I think we had talked about this at the initial presentation, it's outlined in red on this drawing, and so that boundary doesn't exist today. There's an A&R plan that'll be filed shortly, and it'll be in front of the board for approval at the next meeting. And this graphic, this is the A&R plan that you will see in short order, and I've highlighted just the lots, just to be able to read it a little bit better. So the Brigham parcel is that, is highlighted in blue. The parcel up in the top right-hand corner is the restaurant parcel. This is the hotel parcel. And then the balance of that Development Area B will be a single parcel that's highlighted in that yellow outline. That's what I wanted to cover on the enabling package. Maybe just to recap a couple of things, as we've noted, we do have, we received today a fairly detailed design review memo from Beta. Merrick, I'm sure we'll talk about it in a bit. The comments that have been received are all fairly designed in nature and detailed in nature, and we don't see a trouble in addressing any of those, in really fine-tuning this into a final design to address the Beta comments. Comments were also forwarded on from the fire department, speaking of access, really primarily more relating to circulation around the Brigham parcel, which I think we'll get into on the Brigham PDR. The action that we are asking the board to take this evening is to act, well, the PDR for the enabling package really needs to be acted on in advance of any action, any formal action taken on the Brigham parcel. So we're sort of happy to answer any questions related to clarifying this with the idea that the board may be in a position, given the Beta review and a draft approval that's been talked about, to be able to take action on the enabling package this evening. So happy to take questions.
Well, why don't we hear from our staff commentary, if we can summarize highlights,
So for the record, my name is Merrick Turner with Beta Group, the peer reviewer for the project, for the town. As Paul noted, I think that we completed our review, and you have a comment letter in front of you, a May 22 letter to the board entitled Medical Office Building Enabling I heard, I think, a lot of answers to the questions that we raised in our memo just a moment ago from Paul, and I think just in general, we would agree that most of the issues that we did describe were more technical in nature, design coordination and so forth. The park, as described and as laid out, is consistent with that that was presented in the amended master plan about a month ago, both in terms of its size, its layout, its As mentioned, we certainly see the need for design detail coordination, but there are certainly features that we like and appreciate in terms of the effort that's gone in. For example, the density of planting, I think there's 100-plus trees proposed for this area. One of the comments that we raised before is that importance of trying to break up at a pedestrian-level views to the various parking lots and so forth, and we think that as these trees mature out, that that would be effective in achieving that. In terms of the features, sitting walls, shade areas, and so forth, I'm glad to hear Paul reflect on the addition of potentially some furniture in the central plaza area, possibly some shading-type structures, or even the introduction of a tree in the central area to introduce some additional shade as this development is maturing. This could be a fairly heat-intensive area in the early phases. One additional comment that we'd have just in the park in general is elsewhere in the site, there's been a theme of using a more natural stone wall with some stone walls that are material native to the site, for example, in the entrance park at the corner of Blue Hill Drive and University Ave, also at the main entrances to the development, the main development in general, I believe the Oval Park, too. So we would encourage consideration, perhaps at the entry points, to pick up that same theme, again, just noting the comments about furniture, about bike racks, and just trying to pick up that consistency with other parks and features throughout the project. Going on to some other areas, just running through some more technical considerations, the utility work in the site is fairly straightforward. It really is limited to water line construction. The water line is located connecting Bridges Way through to the access serving the Brigham site. We think that's a good idea, as was noted just a moment ago. That provides not only redundancy in supply to the Brigham site and the area in general, it also is beneficial to firefighting operations in terms of that redundancy and more effective water supply. So we certainly think that's a good idea. our traffic group did take a look at this intersection in terms of stop control, and we don't see any operational concern in terms of capacity for a stop control here relative to the operation of the Brigham Hotel and the driveway leading up to University Ave. We would like to see, and this is related to entrance to the Brigham site, both in Phase 1 and Phase 2, we think that this could stand a little improvement on this corner, maybe a slightly flatter radius on the inside, a slightly flatter radius at the center line. The outside edge is fine, but just a small improvement there, I think that would help facilitate in both phases fire access around this corner, but also access in and out of the parking lot. So again, design detail considerations, but not major issues in terms of operational concerns in terms of access. Turning templates have been furnished to the fire department, and they have been reviewed and accepted by the fire department, so general access through the driveway as it accesses either to the right and into the Brigham site, or to the left to the hotel and into the Brigham site. Those are also acceptable to the fire department. Stormwater design also in accordance with MASTEP stormwater standards. One of the comments we did note in our review is there's an infiltration facility in this location here, which is actually not being built as part of the enabling package. The information provided indicated that this area in general, as you get down towards the railroad tracks, is a little less favorable in terms of infiltration, so we'd encourage some test pits to be done in this area, just to verify soil conditions. If this should prove a little less effective than the assumed design, one alternative might be for the applicant to make this location a little bit larger. So knowing a little bit more about this may make a better decision about this, or needed decision about this. So it's not that this is part, but it should be understood as part, I think, of the overall enabling package construction. But other than that, the drainage design is consistent with that that was forwarded in the amended master plan for the Development Area B. And as Paul also mentioned, the general sort of nature and intent of this area really has remained unchanged since the original master plan was approved in 2013. This is what is referred to as outlet point four, which goes out towards the MBTA corridor, and this area conceptually has stayed the same. There have been some relocations of the various structures, but the enabling package as presented is consistent with what we've most recently seen in the approved Development Area B plan. Lighting plan wasn't included in the package, again, should be a fairly straightforward thing to prepare. Lighting was performed in the Meadow, and we would look to produce the same kind of lighting theme through there, and as Paul just noted, fixtures and details are intended to be consistent with the rest of the project development. So as a general conclusion, I think most of the issues that we do-- So as a general conclusion, I think most of the issues that we do see are readily resolvable, and certainly we see no issue with coordinating those out with the applicant.
Thank you. I guess at this point we'll ask for questions from the board?
What's that? First of all, Paul, these drawings, mostly drawings, are not for construction. So what are we supposed to go on here?
Well...
The Cs, the one you show there is an engine drawing, but the others...
Right. All of the engineering drawings are construction, they are final design drawings. The park, the park design recognizes that there would be comments, coordination, design coordination comments from Beta, and so so those drawings will be fine-tuned. And I mean, honestly, it's a it's part of a standard title block. If you're not going to build from the plans, then not-for-construction get put into the title block. In order in order to finalize the design drawings in terms of the landscape and those matters, those comments will get addressed as we work through them with Beta, and then the plans will be finalized.
So everything we saw in all those L drawings are, I mean, then how will they be used? Is everything on the ones on the C series that you see there that...
I think I think the point he makes, it's a very standard practice in in design work to label things not for construction until they're to be built, yeah.
These are the design drawings, Steve. I mean, short of short of the addressing the very detailed design comments that Beta has in the review of, you know, suggested moving or retaining wall here or there, that note will go away once the comments are addressed.
There's no, well, there is a seal on it, but...
So in the L series drawings, you still have the sidewalk coming from the garage. The C series does not have that.
Right, which is an outstanding, that's an outstanding coordination issue, right?
I wanted to go over the...
I lost the clicker.
The intersections, so going back to the one we chose the traffic better.
Yeah, I also have the next one. There you go.
So you, Beta agrees that there should be a four-way stop intersection?
Yes.
Now, what about the previous one? Now they're showing a stop sign going out and a stop. It looks like a stop for the left turn, but not for the straight through. Yes.
I don't think this is intended to be a stop. I would imagine this is just a yielding left.
Correct.
Yeah. I think this is just an error on this particular scale.
So that's that needs to be corrected, then?
Yes.
All right. So then the other thing that we discussed and we thought we agreed on, Beta agreed, that the crosswalk, rather than being east-west there, it should be at a 45-degree angle?
Yes.
And they want an agreement with that?
Yeah, what, you'll see that comment in the Brigham set, Steve. This is, you know, there's a point here which is which is where is it enabling, where is it Brigham, and we're sort of right there, so...
Isn't, but isn't that you?
Technically, yes.
So that has to be fixed, or as a condition on the acceptance?
So what our process would be, Steve, is basically every comment you're going to hear tonight, both in terms of the enabling package and Brigham, it would basically a checkoff procedure. So when we have a comment that says make the crosswalk 45 degrees, we would go back to a plan set that would be provided a week or two from now presumably, and we would say, was this done?
And should that be a raised sidewalk? And what about the stop signs there?
Yeah, I don't I don't think a raised crosswalk would necessarily be required. I mean, you could have a raised crosswalk there, it might complicate drainage and so forth. I think that a regular, I don't think that the volume here is going to be so significant in any phase, just because of the nature of the operation of the building, that it would, you would have a lot of conflict there.
So are you going to make this like a stamped crosswalk, or...
I was going to suggest, I was going to suggest that I think we'd feel more comfortable with a colored stamped asphalt.
Okay, because this is not like the ordinary crosswalks, so there's a lot of...
No, no, I agree, and I think I think a built-in traffic coming element to this design is is that you're making a fairly, you know, hard left-hand turn, so I don't know that I worry about excessive speeds. I think that just showing a different texture and a different color on the walk is probably just right for here.
And the 45 issue, I think, was a comment from you. It definitely encourages the visibility, you know, you go back to the garage or...
Yeah, every person that comes out is looking equally left and right. So you're still showing a stop line for the traffic coming out at that point? It's right where the red line is, so it might be on top of it. Is that stop sign necessary at all?
I don't believe that's necessary from our standpoint. You're referring to this right here, right?
Right there, right.
I think, as was just noted, I think the radius there will be such that it'll be quickly habit-forming that you have to go slow.
Okay, so eliminate that and put 45 degrees and have it stamped on. That's it?
I have a question with regards to the sun cover, because I, too, agree that during the early stages, to get tree growth, I know in some of the parks, it can take upwards to seven years. And since we hope that this park will be readily utilized, I would also like to see some type of a some type of raining for pedestrians where they can stop and sit a park bench when it's 90 degrees, with a lot of those impermeable surfaces might raise that temperature even greater, so that sun cover might be nice. I'm not sure where that would go within the park itself.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's in the formulation stage at this point, but I think Paul would agree that there needs to be some consideration for something there.
And then the other point is with the with the stormwater and the drainage, I think this is a good opportunity also to recharge the soil, again, with the impermeable surfaces. What is what is the idea here as far as drainage? What is the what is the concept here as far as the topology and stuff?
Do you have the... So in general, the drainage, these drainage areas are large infiltration structures. So all of these big blocks here, here, here. So the drainage system from parking lot surfaces and roofs feeds directly and infiltrates. So there is a substantial amount of effort to infiltrate drainage in general. And Nate, is Nate here? No. So Nate would know this more specifically than me, but but it's about 80% of the storms or thereabouts that you would normally get in a year, the system has the capacity to capture that and try and infiltrate that. So it's only in the larger storms that you should get a net runoff. So there's a there was a significant effort for the development in general to actually infiltrate. In addition to that in the park, I think that's a detail that needs to be worked out because there isn't an indication of a separate drainage system within the park, and I would expect that it would be mostly sidewalks pitched to runoff to a grass swale and then infiltrate the park area, too. It seems like an ideal opportunity to do that. So I think there'll be a substantial amount of infiltration.
All right, one more minor thing here. And this shows up, it's like in both, I'm looking at C 111, it shows up better, I think.
Do you have the...
Oh.
Yeah.
This one.
All right, so at the four-way intersection there, there's traffic coming from the hotel, people walking from the hotel on the Brigham side of the street, and then they, no, the other side, the Brigham side, yeah. So when they get to the corner there, they have to use that crosswalk.
That one.
Right, so so the the corner there itself should be vegetation and not concrete sidewalk, forcing them to use that crosswalk.
Oh, right, right, in the very, very corner itself, just sort of dead-ending sidewalk. Okay, all right. Yeah, and just as an added note, one of our comments, and again, this is this is where does Brigham end, where does the enabling package begin? There's a small area in here where where we'd like to see that continuation of sort of landscaping and streetscaping, beginning to link this greenway and beginning to link the various plantings that were put in the hotel.
But for the board's clarification sake, NED will be responsible for the road in its entirety, so if there's three trees connected with that road, then that'll be our responsibility. Even though that particular leg, probably what you're looking at, Steve, is that particular leg of the access drive technically is on Brigham.
But you'll be doing it.
We're responsible for it, right?
Good. I just have a couple of quick questions. One of them is about a question of irrigation in the park. I'm surprised that that's a question. I would think with this level of investment, that park would want to be fully irrigated to ensure that this is a place that is actually, you know, viable. Again, I'm not an engineer or a landscape architect or anything else, but I've, most landscape architects I've worked with, I don't think would suggest not irrigating that or only partially irrigating it. So do they state that that weighs into the cost model of all this stuff? I understand there's implications there, but that would be one comment. And then, who, so Ned will continue to own the park, right? Or is that, and own and maintain the park, I presume?
Yes.
As part of the overall development plan? Okay. Okay, that's all for me, too.
So with New England Development owning the park, is it, are the same rules and regulations and things that are applying to the other parts, like it's still private property, but I wondered like what sorts of public uses would be possible?
It is private property. I imagine it could be it could be treated just like the plaza area between Target and Weymouths. There's a operating policy that's in place that calls for ways for that space to be used. It's coordinated through our operating group and through the planning office.
Right, that's, I could just add to that, for the plaza across the street, we do have a plaza policy that if anyone wants to have an event there, that they submit a request to the planning department, and either myself or the director can approve that after review of the plan, the layout, to make sure sidewalks aren't blocked, that there's access, that everything is within the plaza, and, you know, review signage. We could revise that policy to include, or update it to include the park.
Any other commentary from the board?
No questions from...
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who has a question or a comment? Does the board feel comfortable that we entertain a motion toward approval? We have probably some conditions we need to talk about, and there's probably, I know, Mr. Bailey's, I'm sorry, I already forgot your name.
It's Horstman.
Yes, it's Horstman. I know there was some adjustments to the potential conditions that we maybe we should discuss. Is that appropriate?
Right, so in your packet, it was uploaded electronically earlier today, and then I had it printed out for you tonight as a draft approval for your review, with some suggested conditions. Condition number one on page three is really asking for conditioning that a final revised plan be provided, addressing all of the issues that Beta brought up in their review memo. And then you could also include the other items that came up tonight about revising the angle of that that crosswalk, the material for the crosswalk, to eliminate that crosswalk coming out of the garage, to update that...
Stop line.
Yep, okay, update the exhibit CP1 that shows those stop lines coming in on the proposed Brigham way. So that's where final plan set would be provided.
Landscaping that one corner of the intersection.
And then, condition number two, I think this could now be removed. I had drafted this earlier in the day because we are still waiting final comments from the fire department. We have since this morning, we received the full turning templates for all the fire department vehicles for Phase One to get around the building from all directions, and you received a memo in your electronic packet tonight that the fire department has reviewed those, and they can get around the building and around the site from all directions in the Phase One, so there's no need to have this temporary connection, which is what condition two was drafted before, where there may need to be a temporary access across the future residential site up to the Bridges Way. So I think we can remove this condition two now. Three was to all sidewalk crossings over the driveways should maintain that continuous Condition four is the applicant to return to the board for a final review and detail of the landscape plan for, this was the Phase B. I'm not sure if we need this one anymore. I may have drafted this before. I know we do have that in your packet that you received on Friday. It's drafted drafting this before, but I think this could be included in condition one, that the final landscape plan? Okay, or the applicant's okay with this condition? Okay, okay. And then suggested condition five was the applicant is responsible for submitting and obtaining approval for any other department, such as the Conservation Commission or Westwood Board of Health. A copy of this decision should be kept on site all times. A final as-built plan shall be provided after construction. And then, most importantly, condition number eight gets at the timing of when this work has to be completed. So this condition ties it to that this work in the enabling package, at least Phase, the first phase, Phase A, has to be prior to the opening of Brigham and Women's, or by December 1, 2018, whichever comes sooner. And if by August 2018, that doesn't look like that's going to happen, that the applicant return to the board to discuss with you options for completing that obligation to complete the work.
Okay. Are there any questions about the conditions from our group here?
I just have a minor detail. When you talk about the landscaping package, I noted the diameter of the trees within there, so we want to make sure that the trees are at a viable seat. I think it was two to two to three inch?
Right, and I think that was one of the comments, was that in one of your memos about increasing the size, too?
We were suggesting...
Increase in the caliber?
Okay.
Increase the what?
The diameter of the tree.
No, I meant the how much?
I forget what exactly was, I think it was one and a half to two and a half, and we were thinking...
Oh, we always require two to three.
Two to two to two and a half, I think, on the ornamentals. All the other trees were in the two to two and a half caliber, which is consistently over the, all the other things. I think it was, my memory, Merrick, was specifically the ornamentals. Is that right, John, that the ornamentals were suggested to be increased to that same two, two and a half inch caliber?
Oh, okay, I see. Beta's comment was to increase the size to two to two and a half on the landscape L 300 planting plan.
I'll make a motion that the board, after reviewing the procedural findings, project findings, and subject to the conditions as modified through this discussion, that we grant project development review approval pursuant to Section 9.7 of the Westwood Zoning Bylaw for the Medical Office Building Enabling Package. Bylaw for the Medical Office Building Enabling Package.
Thanks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of this approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is approved.
Okay, thanks.
Do it all again.
Yeah, was that a public hearing? Was that a public hearing?
No.
Public meeting.
We take the.
Yeah, it will. Yeah. Just before we go on to the next item, I just want to make another quick announcement that, since some folks came in a little bit late, the two items regarding, I've lost my agenda, whatever we were calling them. Items four and five regarding the Washington Street subdivisions, those applications have been withdrawn by the applicant, so we will not be discussing those items tonight. Just FYI. All right. Next item, number two, University Station Development Area B, Brigham and Weyman's Hospital Project Development Review Public Meeting. Proposal for a two-story, 30,000-square-foot medical building and a Phase 1, and a four-story, 50,000-square-foot building and structured parking garage in a Phase 2. This is a meeting that was continued from the 9th of May. Welcome back.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, sorry, Steve Dempsey, Executive Director of Real Estate Facilities Planning and Construction for Brigham and Weyman's Hospital. Before I move on to the presentation, I want to stress and emphasize how excited we are for this opportunity to come to your town. This will be our first bricks-and-mortar-owned building, a primary care, specialty care building for Brigham and Weyman's ever. And it suggests to us that we have a long, long-term commitment to the town that we are making. We are here for a long time. Herefore, we had focused our energies on renting space for a predetermined period of time, and we have changed our philosophy. We're very excited about this particular opportunity, and so we look forward to a long stay in your town, and I would expect over time that many of our workforce will be residents of the, of the town, and certainly, we hope, many of our patients will come from Westwood. I'm going, we're going to try to leave lots of space for questions and, and give a targeted, slimmed version of our presentation, just to reconnect from last time having met in the interim. We think it'd be helpful just to sort of reconnect with you on that, and, but to make this a lot briefer than, than last week, and we'll, we'll take questions when you have them. Thank you. And I'm going to introduce Emma, Emma Jones, our project manager, and she'll do most of the presentation.
We'll see how long this lasts. Mark may have to pinch-hit for me.
Well-planned for the brevity, right?
Sorry. I just wanted to, first of all, thank everybody that met with us for the subcommittee meeting on the 15th. It was very helpful, and I, I felt like we got a lot of positive comments, and, and it was a good working session, so thank you for your time. So this, we're gonna, I'm going to just quickly address items that were brought up in the prior meeting on the 9th, but also the additional comments that we discussed on the 15th, and just run through them quickly. These are all items that you've, you've seen ahead of time. There's just some added graphics, and we're happy to address any comments. So, quick project overview. Again, it's a multi-level ambulatory healthcare facility built in two phases. Phase 1 is 30,000 square feet, two-four, two-story medical office building, and Phase 2 is 50,000 square feet addition to Phase 1, and there will also be structured parking. The building will include, it'll be comprehensive medical facility, and it'll include primary care, urgent care, medical specialties, lab services, and imaging and diagnostics. The predicted timeline for this construction, Phase 1, will be, the construction would be summer of 2017 to summer slash fall of 18, opening in the fall of 18. Phase 2, we are predicting, through our strategic planning, that the design and planning will begin three years after the completion of Phase 1, approximately 2021, and the Phase 2 construction will begin approximately five years after that, 2023. Site circulation was one of the main topics that we discussed last Monday with the subcommittee, and so the plan that you're seeing before you is, addresses all of the proposed changes in circulation, that, and were the outcome of that meeting from last week. So we changed the front of the building to only allow one-way traffic in front of the building. We increased the depth between that sort of center island and the front of the building for increased EMS and fire traffic, as well as just a cleaner flow throughout the site. The other item that we, we strove, really were striving to maintain was the, keeping this flow in the front of the building consistent from Phase 1 to Phase 2, and, and that was something that we came up with and achieved. So this flow in the front of the building will not change from Phase 1 to Phase 2. This is the Phase 2 circulation, as you can see, the upfront pattern, traffic pattern does not change. Items that were brought up were handicap parking specifically, so we have designated the spaces at the front per code requirements, but also we, we wanted to keep all of the handicap parking directly in front of the Phase 1 and Phase 2 buildings. We added an additional accessible ramp, as you can see in the bottom left, to allow patients increased access through that drop-off area. And we also added surface treatment towards, on the exit area, to prevent wrong-way traffic coming in there, but, but allowing EMS and fire to easily traverse that area of the We discussed additional signage, and these are proposed signs that will indicate the flow of parking throughout the site. So as you come down Brigham Way, the first sign, two signs that you see will be a no-entry exit only, because that will be a, it's a one-way exit. Then, sign to patient drop-off and patient parking. The first turn that you can make is to patient drop-off only, and also to urgent care, and then you would continue along the road to patient parking. The second entrance is designating that that is where the handicap parking is, and then obviously, you would continue to the garage for any of the additional patient parking. Please note that we, are we going to request that staff park at the rear of the building to enable maximum patient access and parking in the garage and at the front of the building?
Are all those signs two-sided?
Yes, they're two-sided, and they will be applicable to, obviously, they'll, they'll be applicable to their location, so there's, exactly. We had discussed sort of what would happen in, in the event that, for some reason, Phase 2 didn't come along, and we proposed that we would bring forth and discuss with the board and with the Beta Group, an alternate landscaping plan for Phase 1. So, obviously, this is, this is just a, just an alternate example of what would be added should Phase 2 not be started in 2023. And obviously, this would come back in, in front of the board for approval. There are a couple of questions regarding site operations, deliveries, recycling, trash, biohazard pickup. As you notice, I'm just going to step forward, it's a little easier to point. So I included the interior plan of the building, I know you haven't really seen that. The recycling, as we were saying, is going to be stored within the building, so there will be recycling bins throughout the building, but this storage room right here is where the recycling will be held. It will be picked up weekly, more often if necessary. The trash pickup, obviously, the dumpster is here, so this is, there's access through here. The sidewalks, as well as the, the pad, are at the same height as the pedestrian sidewalks, so the ramp up will be in this area. The biohazard storage and pickup is in this area right here. That will be picked up on a weekly basis. The biohazard is simply red bag trash, so needles, vex, empty vaccine bottles, those items, it's stored in a locked area per code and regulations. The delivery and loading area is located right here, and then, any storage is from, it would be included from there. So, deliveries and biohazard stor, biohazard pickup, lab services, et cetera, would be all between business hours, because there has to be a staff member on site to accept deliveries, obviously, and also meet the lab courier, et cetera. These are the turning templates that were provided to show the pickup, obviously, and the movement of the, any of the delivery vehicles. No vehicle coming to this building will be larger than a box truck, so it'll all be very small, small trucks. Public transportation was also a hot topic last time we met. The Brigham has a history of providing an employee checklist to all of their employees, all of their new employees, and they promote using public transportation. This document that you see before you is provided by Human Resources, and it is going to be updated to provide all of the Westwood pertinent information. If you read it in your packet, this addresses the Longwood campus, but obviously, it will be updated. They have not started their onboarding practice, process or hiring process as of yet, so this is currently in the works, and there's not a final document, but it will be updated with options, schedules, et cetera, for public transportation. The Brigham also offers discounts for the use, for their employees using public transportation, and attached in your list are the discount rates. So there's the current rates of the various types of public transportation, as well as the employee cost, and it's a 50% discount for employees. The fire and EMS were also, sorry, the fire department was a part of our discussion on the 15th, and they had a lot of addition, good commentary as to where we would, how they would cycle throughout the site. One of the, the large, the sort of more, larger discussion points was the blocking of traffic as they, if they had to pull their vehicle in front, and that's why we widened this drive access, so that an ambulance can pull right up to the building, but passenger cars can still pass. The urgent care will be located in this corner of the building, so there are two options. They can either pull the emergency vehicles in front of this building, or we have also provided a rear access from the urgent care. We had originally discussed using shared parking spaces, sort of cordoned off for this. However, we're going to dedicate spaces at the rear of our building, which are not in shared, in, not in the shared parking area, in order to be good neighbors to the Marriott, where the EMS can locate their vehicles and wheel somebody out the back if they chose, so they can go to the front of the building or the rear. And this is just the same for Phase 2. Pedestrian access was also greatly discussed, the, and obviously, it was, it was discussed with the NED Enabling Plan as well. Our connections to the park will be coordinated with NED's Enabling Package. We had discussed, obviously, the removal of the, the pedestrian access from the, the garage, that garage connection, and then, the corner right above the garage, as the, that will be that angled walkway, as we previously discussed. In addition, we looked at the vehicle entrance and exit at the rear side of the garage, and the design for the garage, when it comes about to be approved, the panels on the either, on either side of the opening will be removed to increase pedestrian visibility for cars exiting the garage. In addition, for pedestrian safety, all of the landscaping that we provide throughout the site will be reviewed, and pedestrian sightlines will be taken into consideration. The architecture and design items, one item that was brought up was whether or not this building would be LEED. It will not be LEED certified, per se, however, the architect of record on this project will provide this LEED checklist, noting items after our construction documents are complete, that, items that would be considered by the USGBC as conforming to LEED guidelines, however, will not be technically certified as a LEED building. But we would like to emphasize that the design philosophy behind the Brigham project is, we have a high sensitivity to creating energy-efficient and environmentally-friendly buildings. So there are a lot of LEED environmental aspects incorporated into the design, we're just not seeking the actual certificate. These are just some visuals to refresh your memory on the architecture. This is Phase 1. The Phase 1 elevations. Beta had requested some additional detailed drawings, sections, and images to clarify some of the architectural elements, a couple of building sections where the building steps in and out, and those have all been provided to Beta. Again, this is Phase 1. This is the front of the building as it relates to Phase 2. There was a question regarding the, the Phase 2 elevation, and as you can see, the materials will be the same from Phase 1 to Phase 2, but obviously, prior to the building of Phase 2, we will come back and have the board review the materials. In addition, we'll have samples of the material details that will be proposed for the garage for you to review. So this is the north end of the building. This is the rear, looking from the train tracks. One item that was requested was a larger example of the siding detail, which you'll see the bottom left, showing the variation of the paneling system, the wood-type paneling. So that's what it looks like in real life on a building, so it does show sort of the variation in coloring. The, the last item was, there was a request for the plan of the garage with dimensions, and so that is attached. Obviously, the proposed material for the, the garage is precast stained concrete, and that will be brought to the board for approval prior to the construction of Phase 2.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Are there any, we have some comments from our staff?
For the record, Merrick Turner again, from Beta Group, peer reviewers. So, yeah, just to recap the process, so following the meeting on, on May 9th, we were provided with a fairly detailed response to the comments that we issued in our initial We've taken those responses. We met with the applicant on May 15th, last Monday. Supplemental material was provided, which you, you just presented. That material has also been looked at, and the letter that you have before you, the May 22nd letter entitled Brigham and Weyman's Hospital, University Station Project Development Review, considers the May 9th hearing, the response to comments that we received at that hearing, the May 15th meeting, and the subsequent material that, that we were just presented. So the status is indicated there. So the status is indicated there, wraps up all of those pieces of information and, and updates the project to, to be current with, with the current information provided. At the back of the memo, you'll also note that there is a series of markups, which actually take some of the exhibits you've just seen and, and include certain comments relative to some of this latest material. In general, in the letter, if you, if you were to go and categorize each of the review comments, we feel that they would fall into one of three categories. By far and away, the, the bulk of, of comments at this point indicate plan update required. And essentially, that's a reflection of having reviewed the applicant response, being satisfied with the applicant response, and the final piece in the picture would be a plan update just needs to be obtained, just basically confirming that the, the narrative commitment, if you will, is, is, has been followed through with. It's the process that we were just describing a little earlier in the meeting relative to the enabling package. So we feel that the bulk of the comments actually fall into that category. Second category, which is really only a handful of comments, and I'll highlight them now, are a couple of locations or a couple of instances where we may not have agreed with the entire response and, and felt that there was a, a slight additional action required. And to the extent that they're still outstanding, maybe we can clarify those, those now, but there really are not many of those. Just as, as an indication, visual mitigation screening, page five, bottom of page five, V2. Let's just go, see if I can find, oop. Just see if I can find a plan here. This'll do. So in Phase Two, this comment actually refers to a suggestion by, by our landscape folks that perhaps along this edge of the building, some additional shade trees could be provided at some point in the development. The, the response indicated, well, we don't want to do that right now because in Phase Two, there'll be so much work around the site that, that whatever those plantings might be, they're going to get disturbed. And I think that's a valid comment and response. However, in the future, with Phase Two, we would still suggest, I think we'd like, we like the idea of some additional tree plantings along this back edge. We feel that it breaks the facade up a little bit, just provides a little shade to the backside of the building as well. So that was a, a, a comment that I'm not sure if you guys have, have, have come to a decision on that or are okay with, with that, but that's just one instance of, of something we're just looking to clarify.
The landscaping plan that, that will be provided as the, the plan after the
Second example of that. Yep, okay. Yes, we talked about this a little moment ago, V7, midway down page six. This is one of those locations where we were referring to, the comment was, we'd like to see planting along this edge, and, and as was just noted in the enabling package, that is in fact something that, that would occur in the enabling package as opposed to the Brigham package. So we had one comment there, which was clarified tonight via the enabling package, but that was just that continuation of planting through the park into the hotel site. So that has been resolved. Public safety, today, the fire department confirmed that they were accepting of the emergency access in EGRS, so, so that is all set. Stormwater management. Again, test bits, SW1, bottom of page nine. The response that we received indicated that there was data available. This is for infiltration structures located at the cell, so the easterly side of the building, this area here. The response to comments suggested there was information available. It was really only one location that there was information. We felt that there should be a little bit more. Again, I, I wouldn't expect that to be an issue, but we'd suggest a little additional subsurface work there just to verify that, that the soil conditions are what was anticipated. We don't anticipate a problem, and we assume that those will be done. So as, as far as comments just needing outstanding information, those are, those are literally it. And then the last category would be comments which we felt became potential conditions. And we can run through those now if you'd like. Abby could also highlight those in terms of, of discussion turning to a, a potential decision, but I'd be happy to run through those too. But just to recap, I think that, that in all, everything that we're looking for is essentially responded to through the meetings, through the additional information provided.
Okay. Thanks very much. I think we can do the conditions once, maybe. Any comments or questions from the board? I'm sorry, are you, you having that, or you, you're good to go? All right. Sorry, back to the board.
All right. So in the garage, there's the, before Phase One and after Phase One, you have an entrance at either side. In Phase Two, that's definitely, we want the sidewalk, the exit at sidewalk level. But what happens in Phase One, when we really have a parking lot entrance there at one end, at street level, and then at the other end, you have the, sometimes it showed, like, they would show yellow going across, but in the Phase One diagram, it, it, it doesn't because it's, really is like a driveway cutting across there.
So I, I think in Phase One.
So I, so with the
Is that microphone on?
Yeah, so Phase, look at Phase, I'm looking at Page, looking at C2A and C2B, and you can see the difference there.
So I would, I would say that we would, as we were discussing, there would be the angled connection
Yeah.
to the park here, and that that would be sort of different texture. But it would not be raised up. That would be how this is addressed in Phase One.
Phase One, it would be raised?
No, not, not raised in Phase One, but in Phase Two, when the garage is there, it would be raised so that there would be, you would ramp up slightly to the garage, but then the pedestrian access, as here, would remain at the same level across the
So there would be, there'd be a, a difference in height, exiting one end of the garage, exiting from the other?
Yes.
And so that's not a
Yes.
You're aware of that, so
Well, yeah, we would, I mean, it would ramp down again on the other side as well, but there just wouldn't be a pedestrian walkway across the other end.
Okay, so what, the, what, the garage floor is, is level, at the same level as the sidewalk, then?
Yes.
The, right, so there, the, at the end of the parking lot, for the, no, the handicap parking lot. So at the left end of it, there's that little backup area that really only serves the end space there. Is that needed at all because the car could just back up towards the entrance and, and go out? It doesn't really need that indentation in the end of the parking lot.
I, I, I would agree. I think, I mean, we wouldn't be concerned if that was taken away and you just backed up into that space.
Right.
So if it just came straight down?
Straight down, yeah.
Okay.
And that would enable you then to angle that whole walkway nicely, get a little curve, and the bottom, where it's that shop, you can get a nice curve to it and then head over at an angle so you get to that point where it's the 45-degree crosswalk and rather have, having yourself straight up and down.
Oh, we have it straight across the front.
On the bottom, yeah, there.
The handicap
Once, once it gets to, once it gets to the corner, once it gets past the handicap, to the left, on the left, siding right there.
To angle there.
Yeah, and, yeah, make a nice curve and angle it towards the other side.
So, but let me just note that in Phase Two, that's where the garage
So on, on Phase Two, well, my next question would be, the corner of the garage goes right there.
That's the exit.
Yeah, have you thought about, the big question is, how are you going to build Phase Two when, for instance, you're building a corner of the garage right next to that sidewalk, and that sidewalk certainly wouldn't be usable during the construction period?
Correct.
And, and where in general are they, are they, and since the driveway through there is, is inside the garage, how do cars get to the outside parking during construction?
So during construction, we would probably also just slightly, I mean, our previous presentation, what we've done is we need to get out a couple of spaces here to allow the parking floor to this other parking area. You can see the outline of the garage is like here.
Yeah.
So we would most likely remove a couple of these spaces, which we do not need as handicap spaces for the parking lot. So we, and we would have to, they would also still, you know, have to come around.
Yeah.
We wouldn't want patients to come around. So we would remove that.
But you're going to be building a building there.
Yeah.
Right? And there's not going to be any parking during the construction in that area, right? Or am I missing something?
Yeah, maybe.
The garage happens first.
Oh, the garage happens first, sorry, okay.
And the building is staged.
Got it.
So once the garage is, please, did you want to put in the place, back in the place, then, excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry. Then Phase Two, that, and that's part of the reason why we wanted to maintain the same circulation in the front of the building for Phase One and Phase Two, is for pedestrian safety, so that we don't have the pedestrians up close to the front of the building where we would be constructing, so that all of this would remain, you know, they would be able to flow outside of the construction zone, and we would emphasize that any construction access would be from the rear to this Phase Two.
So there'd be some realignment of the pedestrian walkway temporarily because the corner of the building is so close to the
Yes.
sidewalk. And so at this point, do we need diagrams of how that's done, or do we wait until?
I don't think so. No, I, I think I, I think that, that's something to think through at the time that the, the actual garage becomes more detailed and, and better known in terms of its specific dimensions. But it's certainly a valid point that pedestrian activity, which will be established by then, needs to be addressed.
So one picture, you did show the, the rough surface to keep automobiles from coming in, the, the entrance there, and how wide is that? Because it didn't, yes, so it doesn't, is it 12 feet wide? It doesn't seem to look
The distance across there is 24 feet wide.
Right, but I, the, the surface treatment, is it 12 feet?
That, I actually want to consult with our, our civil as to sort of, oh, sorry. I want to consult with our civil as to what, what actual width that's going to be, because there will be a slope to it. So I, in order for it to be driven over, so that will, that'll be on the, the final construction civil drawings, and it'll be dimensioned. But this was just showing a graphic representation of, we, we want to prevent people trying to come in the wrong way.
So we will get the exact dimension of
You will have the exact dimensions, yes.
And how exactly is that going to prevent someone from coming in the other way? It's just going to be a raised slope?
It's, so yeah, it's, it's almost like a, for lack of a better term, a cobblestone sort of raised angle that the, the fire department is fine driving over, but it would just prevent other vehicles as you come down the main drive. It's not something you would, there will be do not enter signs, signage saying do not enter, but just in case, an additional dissuasion to, to enter through there.
Okay.
The fire department was fine as long as we didn't have any granite curbs.
And I just want to point out, you got the sidewalk correct there, where, where it doesn't go right to the corner, it turns.
Yes.
NED didn't, but you did, so good.
Anybody, any other takers?
Good?
Nope.
Brian? I just have two questions. One is, on slide 11, we, we put an emphasis on the direction of the urgent care, and so, so the, if you look at the second sign from the left, where it's, where you're trying to point a car to go in a certain direction, but that's not necessarily where you would park for urgent care, is it? I'm just
No, the urgent care parking, so there's, there's parking here for some of the urgent care patients, handicap parking here, and then the additional parking along the side, which is shared parking, is where urgent care patients can park. They can also park in the garage if they choose, however, there is parking along the side of, of the urgent care. They won't, urgent care visits are not as long as primary care, et cetera.
So would the urgent care sign be more visible on the left side or the right side when you get there? So people might miss it when they come in and
The urgent care, so this sign will also say urgent care, so you'll see, it'll say urgent care, urgent care pointing this way, and then as you come around
Go that way.
You'll go here, and then urgent care, it will say straight ahead to urgent care.
Right. I'm just thinking, is that the best place for it, or would the right side be better? Would you need
You mean down here?
Yes.
Well, there's, there's
How big are these signs?
There's a tree there.
Are these signs?
I don't have the dimensions of the sign. We have a signage consultant that will make sure that the signs are
They're high enough.
in conformance with all of the policies and procedures that
So, but these signs are like, the bottom of the signs are like six feet off the ground, or?
They will, you will, you will be given a formal signage package that will have all of the dimensions of
Seven feet if it's pedestrian. So I'd expect in that sort of situation, they're probably going to be about that high off the ground.
I, I think the most important thing was just going to be setback from the roadway and visibility too, because I think the size, one of the challenges with the sizing of the signs is going to be, there's quite a bit of information on there. I think the town standard is two by two. I think it's four square feet, and I think that's going to be difficult to get that information on. So they might need to be a little bit bigger to actually make it as clear as possible.
The bottom would be seven feet and the
Typically, yes.
signs, they have to be more than several feet tall because
I, I would not think, I doubt that they'd get to six feet tall. I'd say something in the four-foot range is probably plenty. I know in the Longwood area, there's a lot of directional signs, there's a very sort of consistent sign usage down there, and I don't recall seeing signs, you know, that big.
And then the, then I just had a question with regards to the, to the timing of, so if, if the, if Phase Two doesn't happen, so I think it's, it's listed as six years. So what is the, is that the rationale for that? Because that would have been at the, the start of
So the, the rationale is that we're anticipating, per the Brigham and Women's sort of strategic plan, that the Phase Two design and planning will occur, that will begin, that process will begin three years after the opening of, or the completion of Phase One. So the designing and planning will be in process, and then we're anticipating, you know, obviously, as we go through the designing, the planning, we'll be back here hanging out with you guys again. And then the construction would begin approximately five years after, again, the, the completion of Phase One. So once we've come through the, we've got through the design and the planning, and then the permitting, that's sort of the anticipation of the timeframe. So if it, if for some reason, the Brigham decided not to, or there was some reason that they decided not to, to go ahead with Phase Two, we're, we're simply saying that, you know, if five to six years has passed and we have not honored our commitment to, to come in with Phase Two, to come in with Phase Two, then we wanna sit down and we wanna re-approach the landscaping topic, because, um, there's a lot of landscaping that can be done, that we don't wanna just leave, it's not there. And obviously, there are items that we've said that we're not in, we're not installing in Phase One because of the imminent Phase Two, and we don't wanna, you know, put the trees in and take them out again. So, if Phase Two doesn't occur, then we wanna put the, we wanna go ahead and put the trees back in.
Great. And then my, the last question has had to do with the material, so you, uh, so it sounds like, uh, this was a discussion as part of the, when you met on that Monday. Did that have to do with the material that we were looking at on the table, where it looked similar here? Is that the, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the one where it all kinda looked, even though they, it, there's a variation in it, when you put it all on the table, in the smaller samples, you don't see the, the, um.
Yeah, 'cause you showed, that was a, a live photo.
Yeah, so the bottom left is a live photo of that same material. You can see, if you look at the, the material board up top, um, Items Five, Six, tho, those all through, all, sorry, just Items Five, they all look pretty similar, but then when you get them on a larger scale, um, they actually have variation.
Right, all right, thanks. That's all.
Great. Are there any, um, anyone from the, from the public who'd like to comment, or have a question? Okay.
I have one, one more.
No!
One question on, on Slide eleven, uh, the signage, I just wondered, is there a need for a sign, uh, at the right, the far-right entrance, you know, coming into the urgent care, is that, that's a one-way out, right? So, right, um, so if people coming from the Marriott, can they, would they go against the traffic that's coming from the urgent care area?
So, from the urgent care, like, over here?
Yeah, right, in there.
Yeah, so there will be, sorry, there will be a sign stating that this is one-way out here. Um, the Marriott, the, the Marriott, um, um, exit will, they will exit here and come down this roadway, but we will put a sign that says one-way, do not enter. Thank you, thank you for that.
Good.
Okay. Uh, so hearing nothing from the public, um, we've heard from the board, we've heard from our staff and our peer review group. Um, I understand we have a draft motion, um, as well as some draft conditions, I guess, in the, which would be attached to a motion. Should we go through those quickly?
Right. Um, so, since your last meeting, the applicant has provided a lot of information. We've received the full report from Beta Group, um, so I know at the last meeting, you talked a little bit about possibly, um, approving just the Phase One building. However, after these revised plans and reviewing with Beta, um, I've put together a draft list of conditions based on, are looking at, asking you to approve the Phase One, the full, the full site, um, the building and the site for Phase One with conditions, um, asking that the plans be updated and submitted to, um, myself and Beta Group to address all the items, um, that they responded to, and that, uh, Beta asked for plan updates and anything new for tonight, and then there's a condition that for Phase Two, the applicant would have to return to you for a review of the details on, um, all aspects of Phase Two. Um, so, it was uploaded in your electronic packet, and then before you tonight, um, the suggested condition number one is asking for the final revised plan set to be submitted to myself and Beta, and then all these bullet points really, um, summarize all of the plan updates that Beta summarized, including the two landscape comments that the applicant responded to earlier about, um, adding the trees along, um, the southwest and west side of, um, the Phase One, um, buildings, and then also along the access drive. Um, and then I would also add a plan update to that to, um.
East and east side.
Southeast, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that gets a little confusing.
Sorry.
What corner is what here, because I look at north, everything is north.
The North Arrow.
So, North Arrow is regarded as, as going up.
Train station.
Yeah, so.
The train track.
So, yeah, so I, but, when it says southwest and west sides of the Phase One building, I thought the building would only have a north, south, east, and west side, so where's, which is the southwest side?
Can we make a, a point of clarification, having the, uh, any, I think A D is, is responsibility for the exit, uh, the drive, the, uh, the west corner, uh, the, uh, by parking. Correct?
The access drive, that's noted.
Yep, right, right, so yes, in the, um, in the draft decision that they have, the board members have, that was provided to you, there's just a note saying, um, the additional, um, tree plantings along the access drive on the northwest corner, um, to be provided by New England Development, as noted in the finding above.
Yeah, so this is the northwest, so this will be the southeast corner of the building. This is where you were talking about the additional plantings.
Yep.
East, is that northeast?
North is, north is.
Unfortunately, it says, something's.
This is this way.
You gotta change the, the word, corner and side, because you have southwest and west side of the Phase One building.
Okay, we'll say the east side of the Phase One building, right there.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Uh, no, but before that, additional decisions, tree plantings to the southwest and west side of the Phase One building, so which, what are we talking about there?
That, I believe that's the A D drive.
I, I think, I think.
It says of the Phase One building, but it doesn't say the.
Is that a condition on there, right there?
Yeah, the, the, the fourth, the fourth bullet point.
It was, um, number one, the fourth bullet.
There it is.
Let's see.
I'm, I'm thinking the, the, the southwest, I think. The trees that we're interested in are these here, so it's definitely the easterly side. These ones here are falling into the enabling package, and I think that was already covered. I think the, the confusion may be, there was a comment with regard to the Phase Two build-out in the original letter, which, which talked about kind of shielding the garage a little bit. So, those would come presumably as part of a subsequent Phase Two review. So, I think it's, it's, it's the condition should read this.
Okay.
The easterly side.
So, we just take out the words additional, the situation with tree plantings to the southwest and west side of the Phase One building, and just leave in the proposed shrubbery and plantings along the easterly side?
Correct.
Yep.
Nor, north is straight up, it's the track or the drive. East is this.
Mm-hmm.
West is that.
Yeah, and it does say abouting the rail track.
Okay. All right, so that was the fourth bullet, um, and then continuing on, um, let's see, I would add, add the comment made about removing that, um, bump out on the last space, um, by the accessible space to the left of that last space, um, for the backup, and then also add, um, after receiving the fire department's comments, um, they just asked that this, this curb here.
We're gonna ease the radius.
Just be slightly reduced so that they can make that turn for the, um, all the fire trucks.
So, so when you eliminate that bump out, then say, you know, angle the curve and angle that sidewalk so that it goes from.
Right in here.
Okay.
You're looking for as direct a connection as possible.
Right, direct connection, yes, so it goes from, looking at that point, it goes from the lower right to the upper left.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, um, and then, um, condition number two is also asking for, um, updated plans and supplemental information, um, this includes mostly the stormwater items and, um, Beta's memo, um, the additional test pits, and providing that, um, those calculations. Um, condition number three is that the approval not required plan creating the Brigham's parcel be submitted, um, to you prior to, um, a building permit.
Well, you skipped over some of these.
Oh, do you wanna review all of them?
Well.
These are really.
They already showed the new bike racks, and they're acceptable, and, and that doesn't, and then neither the inverted U or the loop type, it's the circle, embedded circle type, or whatever.
Oh, yeah, circled. Right, so these are largely the plan updates that the applicant responded to, but we're looking for them to be combined into one final site plan package. Oh, okay, and then, um, the final way signage package detailing be submitted. We could also expand on that to include the one-way only from, from the courtyard site. Do you want me to continue reviewing every plan update?
No.
Okay, okay, um, so then, then going back down to condition number four, this is that the applicant is required to come back to you for Phase Two, so that's when you would review again the landscaping, um, traffic, um, sidewalks, parking, all the details, elevations, um, final designs for both the garage and the second building. Um, condition number five, that's, um, to ensure that all the, all the sidewalk crossings over the driveways maintain that, um, that height of the sidewalk, so that they don't slope down, that, um, the cars will have to go up over the sidewalk's height. Um, the out, condition six is the applicant shall return to the planning board for a review and approval of an alternative landscape plan, um, if the Phase Two does not commence within six years, um, so that they would come back to you to present an updated, um, landscape plan, showing what that area will look like. Um, condition.
Six years is kind of a long time. Uh, is that really the cutoff date where you'll know whether you're going forward or not? It's, you know, five years, six years after? Six years, what, what, from today?
No, from the completion.
From the completion.
I, I suggest it as six years from today's date.
Uh, it, uh, to be honest with you, the, the process is, is we're gonna evaluate how busy the site is, how busy the, the practice is, and we reason that, that at about the three-year point, we'll have a good feeling for whether the building ought to be bigger. So, we somewhat arbitrarily assigned three years in our mind, thirty-six months-ish, to evaluate, uh, how the business is trending, and then we just generally assumed a, you know, a sort of an unhurried planning and construction cycle, Steve, that took us from, you know, a couple of years to design and permit, uh, and then to construction to proceed af, after that. Uh, you know, I think it could be slightly sooner if that was really a bona contention of yours.
When do you expect to have this? You got, starting construction tomorrow?
July, in, in, beginning, very beginning of July, we'll start construction.
Right, and then, so will be completed on what date?
Fall two thousand.
We, we, we hope to have a, a C of O in September of eighteen.
Okay, so that's a year from now, or a year and a half from now? Year and a half from now.
Yeah.
And you need three years, so, so it sounds like we can make that five.
I, 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 if, if you feel strongly about it, I'm happy to move it up in time, yeah.
Okay, um, going down the list, condition seven, loading and unloading shall be during business hours, eight AM to six PM. Um, condition eight, nine, and ten is related to, um, fire department's comments and emergency access. Um, I've updated condition eight after receiving the, um, comments from the fire department this afternoon. Um, the applicant has provided the turning templates to confirm adequate ac, access for emergency vehicles for Phase One, um, but to, um, add in there if the fire department, if the fire chief determines, um, that further modifications for access are needed, that that, um, could be through a modification, a modified layout. Um, condition, um, ten is to allow the fire department opportunity to, again, review the plans during Phase Two, when that application would come back to you, um, for the details of Phase Two. Um, suggesting condition number ten, uh, would just to make sure that there's no gates proposed, um, I didn't see any in the plan, but just to make sure that there's no gates for any, um, for example, leading off the applicant's property, um, if there is, there need to be a way for the fire department to open, um, the gate, and that the applicant should, um, provide that access as shown on their plans to can, get ready to connect to that, um, future residential phase, as shown on their plans. Um, condition eleven, um, suggests, um, a final operation and maintenance plan be provided, um, prior to the final certificate of occupancy. We have a draft, there are some comments, and this is a standard condition for these project development reviews, um, that at the end it gets more updated with the, um, contact information, such as the managers, um, on-site managers', um, contact information. Um, condition twelve is for a final sign package to be submitted, um, so we, we'd ask for a final sign package showing all the details, and if, and it, it seems like it's a possibility, if, if the, um, proposed signage can't meet the requirement to the zoning bylaw, then the applicant could, um, file what's referred to as project-specific signage alternative package, to allow you the ability to improve the signs of what's, um, allowed. So, it sounds like that may be something for the wayfinding signs, since we have a requirement of the four feet for directional signs, they might have to come back for that. Um, condition thirteen, the applicant is responsible for submitting a list of hazardous materials, um, and storage items for the, to the Board of Health. Applicant fourteen is responsible for filing any other, um, related approvals, um, a copy of this decision kept on site at all times, and a final as-built plan to be submitted, um, prior to occupancy.
Do they have to go to the conservation, or no?
I don't believe so, there's no.
Do you have to go to conservation, or no?
All right.
No, okay.
I shouldn't need to.
I don't, didn't see, I don't know why you would, but.
No. Can I just say something?
Oh, yes.
Just to be clear on condition number eight, um, we have to revise that to, to remove the reference to have the access go back to this parcel.
Right.
Could be some addition, additional revisions from what's in front of you, just to take out what's out.
Oh, yeah, okay, right, so that's the second portion of, um, condition eight, to remove the part about, um, temporary access drive across to the bridges. I forgot, we had, um, I had drafted that before we received the comments in, from the fire department this afternoon.
So, what do we have, um, about trash removal during construction? Is that, that's somewhere, right?
I can address that.
Okay.
So, trash removal during this, um, during construction, um, the dumpsters would be located at the rear of the building. Um, obviously, we would keep them in a very tidy state, and it's one of our, um, personal pet peeves, is when it looks like a construction site. Yeah, no, we like to keep things very tidy, um, and that's something that we require of our, our contractors.
I just wanna point out, uh, I was talking to the Amtrak people there, and they actually have to complain about, I guess they, you heard their complaint, about trash coming from the hotel that was being built, blowing down into the track area. I also wanna point out, just beyond that, there's, there's all wetlands in the Pontiff River, so it's critical that, uh, we don't allow any trash, including, of course, you know, construction people tend to be not as neat as they can be, and, and when they.
Not ours, they're neat as a pin.
Break, when, when they break for lunch, uh, that means, uh, they should dispose of all their lunch materials, not on the ground, but in proper.
No, there'll be adequate trash receptacles, dumpsters, et cetera, that will be, um, obviously removed.
And Abby, you mentioned, uh, conservation commission, would they go for stormwater, or no?
Right, under the stormwater bylaw?
They're not within a resource area, so there would be no.
They're not within a resource area, so there would be no jurisdictional requirement for them to be for construction.
Right, because we have a new, the new stormwater bylaw, if there's more than 5,000 square feet of disturbance, is that right? I'm looking at uphill right now. So they would- Right, if we could leave that reference in there.
Wouldn't they already, needed approval, because they've already disturbed the ground quite a bit there?
I don't think so, yeah.
No, I know, you haven't.
But there is an existing order of conditions that, that is given, that's allowed all of the disturbance to take.
So you wouldn't-
Much more work would be under that jurisdiction of the existing order of conditions.
So they wouldn't need anything further?
Okay, are there any other, any other comments on the board?
So, I'm a little bit nervous about this, because there are a lot of details in here. Normally, we just have a few things, like the previous one, we had three or four things. And here we have, it seems pages of little items that need to be done before, so at what point does all this become finalized, and, and, you know, do we have another opportunity to check over this, or do we, or after the fact, do we get, just to look at it, and because you have to, you have quite a few things that you're relying upon you as the town planner to check off all these little items, and it's quite a list of them.
Right, I, I mean, the way it's written right now, I'm suggesting that the applicant submit the revised plans to myself, that I would review with beta. I could report back to you when we have those final plans, and that would need to be done prior to construction, so prior to building department. So I could report back to you on the status of the, or this is one way to do it, I could report back to you, update you at an upcoming meeting of those final revised plan sets.
Interesting, okay.
I think I would just reiterate that we would treat our letter as a checklist, basically.
Right.
Go down each item and say, is it done, is it done, is it not done? And I think if it wasn't done, and Abby was concerned, there would be a reason to alert the board.
Right, also, also part of our, the zoning bylaw for this overlay district, prior to the issuance, the, prior to the building commissioner issuing any building permits, I have to provide a written consistency review to make sure the plans submitted to the building department are consistent with your review. So I've, I've done that for every application, so I really go through the decision and make sure everything is checked off.
All right, I'm less nervous now.
Good job, Abby. Okay, hearing no further commentary, I would like to entertain a motion, if there's anyone who's willing to do so.
We have a, Gareth has drafted a draft, actual motion, if you want to read from that. Do you want, I know it's a little long.
You're on the spot.
It's up to you, I mean, this is the form that other project development review proponents have asked for specific findings, as to what you have to make under the bylaw, rewrite it in the record. Like, that, that comes from the hotel.
Gotcha. Yeah, it looks a little familiar.
Yeah.
All right, I move the pursuant to section nine point seven point twelve point two point two of the Westwood zoning bylaw, the planning board, one, approve a medical office facility substantially as shown in an application packet filed on behalf of Brigham and Williams Hospital, Inc., on April eighteenth, twenty seventeen, as supplemented, subject to conditions set forth in a draft decision dated May twenty-three, twenty seventeen. And two, make the following findings. A, the proposed medical office facility project as modified by the conditions materially conformed to the modified master development plan last revised November twenty-second, twenty sixteen, and approved by the planning board on April eleventh, twenty seventeen. B, the proposed project as modified by the conditions does not pose new material adverse impacts or exacerbate existing impacts that have not previously been addressed. C, the proposed project as modified by the conditions results in net financial benefits to the town, and the proponent has adequately mitigated any adverse fiscal impacts by, among other things, entering into a community service agreement with the town. D, no previously developed portion of the UAMUD project has resulted in a material adverse impact that does not comply with regulatory requirements or is substantially detrimental to public health, safety, or the environment. And E, the proposed project as modified by the conditions complies with the requirements of section nine point seven of the Westwood zoning bylaw.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion moves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted you to ask about that crazy drive. Well, I had to look into the mention, then, it was like, that's the key, it's really explained that this is, the whole thing is thirteen inches. Or is it more?
It's one foot six, it's a, it's a section of the wall, it's a section of the-
But there's an overhang, and then there's the wall.
What is the issue with, with granite? Is it, does it puncture tires?
It'll cut the tires.
Yeah.
It'll cut the tires.
What's the, what's the alternative?
I think it'd be like a slope, like a, I don't know, what are you doing?
Like normal, other you said for this situation.
Yeah, they don't, they don't want to go over a flat curve at all.
No, I hear that. I was just curious.
Thanks, thanks Gareth. All right, our item number three, forty Summer Street, special permanent public hearing continued from the ninth of this month. Proposal for a five-hundred-foot-long common driveway to serve three single-family residences on the west side of Summer Street. Welcome back. Grab the-
Good evening again. Since we were last here, we've made a number of minor improvements to the plans based on your comments, the town planner's comments, and the fire chief's comments. I'd just like to point out, to the, to the north of our common drive intersection with Summer Street, we have a four-hundred-foot site distance available to us, and we have three hundred feet to the south, so we're well in excess of calculated site distance requirement for, for a roadway. We moved the hydrant to the southerly side of the driveway based on the fire chief's comments, and we've also put a note here to place the house numbers down at the beginning of the, of the street, so emergency responders will know where the, the homes are. We moved the first house a bit closer to the common drive. It turns out that the fire chief likes to see these houses be within a hundred and fifty feet of the, of the, of the common drive. We widened out our drive from fourteen feet to sixteen feet of pavement. On the southerly side of the street, we have a two-foot-wide shoulder made of grass pavers, and on the southerly side, we have a two-foot shoulder made of crushed stone, that is to drain the roadway. It was made, the suggestion was made that we include some clay dams within that drainage structure. I think that's a good suggestion, it's a good idea. I think that's what we'll do, which will help encourage the water to infiltrate back into the ground, rather than simply stream down through along the edge of the roadway. We also moved the house on lot nine out of the wetland area, we rotated it out, and we shortened up the driveway, again, to comply with the fire chief's hundred-and-fifty-foot-long driveway requirement. We have widened out our turning circle. We are doing that with, the plan is to show it in crushed stone. I have since learned that the fire chief would rather it be paved, so that's what we'll do, we'll pave the extra widening so that we have a total fifty-five-foot diameter turnaround here available to emergency responders. And again, we also have the thruway that would be available to a ladder truck, should one have to go up there, and on down through the easement area. We are indicating on our plan that this is to be an emergency vehicle access through here, and also access for lot eight, but it is not to be accessed for lot seven or nine. And we have no problem with putting a deed restriction on their, on their properties to prevent them from using it. We are, we set aside a twenty-foot buffer strip here on the westly side of the property, where there's to be no cutting of healthy trees, to continue providing the, some screening in this area for adjoining properties. And we also put a speed bump near the exit of the emergency egress, to slow anybody down who happens to be going that way, because we want them to read the no trespassing sign as well, that we're going to put up there. And we use some four different proposals for securing the gate, because the gate is to remain closed at all times. We suggested a lock, a plastic strap, or a lightweight chain, or perhaps a transponder. It turns out that the fire chief does not approve of the locks or the chained gates, so the other two options, he didn't have a problem with. That would be the strap with a transponder with an automatic gate, if we chose to do that, which is probably unlikely for the, for the house that's here. So with these obstructions here, and the gate being closed at all times, it's fairly unlikely that the owner of lot eight is going to use that, who happens to be the applicant, but they, they do have that right, they could if they chose to, but it's unlikely that they would. Essentially, that's the, excuse me? Oh, yeah, we have a few sheds here on the property that we're going to move onto lot eight. There's a, I said, this one should be a barn, it's used for winter storage of, of summer furniture, and the shed here would just be moved over, that's a lightweight, simple move structure.
Where would they be moved to?
Onto lot eight, they're owned by him, the applicant.
And what about the one-story garage?
That also is going to be moved, because it's not in a place that's usable for lot seven, so we'll move that over onto lot eight as well. I said the hydrant, yeah. And I think that's it, in terms of revisions to the plan.
Do we have, Phil, do you have commentary to add to this affair?
So Paul addressed the majority of the issues that we had discussed earlier. Let me stand over here. So the, I don't know if, there was some graphical representation of a swale along the edge of that, that, that new driveway, I just want to make sure that that wasn't constructed that way. Just to, to make sure, because it's a straight shot right down to Summer Street, we didn't want it funneling all the water from the, the driveway onto Summer Street. But he addressed the, the site distance issue, the widening of the driveway to accommodate fire access. What was the other issues? Right, right. I think a lot of the waivers that they requested is not, are not required for a shared driveway. And I think, I think basically they've, they've addressed the issues.
So you're talking about section A dash A, they, they show on the right, looks like a swale on the, on the grass shoulder.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't label it that way, but I just prefer it not be drawn that way, so they don't, they don't construct that.
Swale actually predated the stone shoulder. In the draft, we put this stone shoulder in, he didn't remove the swale. We don't have any need for it now, so no objection to removal.
Is that good?
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
I'm okay. Okay, I guess, comment, questions and comments from the board?
Yeah, so, so what is this dash line that I see? Because you got two lines, you got, you got a small dash line that says fifty-five-foot diameter, which is, seems to be the present line, and then you got a larger dash line beyond that, what is that?
This is the actual lay, oops. The inner dashed line is a fifty-five-foot diameter for the emergency vehicles, that's the paved section.
Yeah.
The outer dash line is the, is the layout line, that's what you, that's going to be the right-of-way, which is similar to what you would have as a layout for a subdivision roadway.
But nothing's going to be removed?
No, no, we're keeping the-
Specifically, that oak tree to remain, the oak tree is not there. There, there are like six trees in that area, they're all, it's like they're all cedar trees. There was a large oak tree on the other side of the-
Yeah, the far side of the drive, I mean.
Right, like, right around here?
Yeah, actually very close to the edge. So, so the real pinch point is between the, the rock circles and that tree. And so right now, trucks can get through there, and a fire truck can get through there now, because I'm, you know, that's a, a tree certainly we want, it's a very large oak tree, and plus, plus the trees in the middle there. You're not, you're, you're going to leave the center as-is?
Yeah, we, we don't have a problem with leaving that, there's no, you can, you can, the vehicles can go right around it, there's no need to take it out.
All right, so-
Based on the comments from the fire department, I think they want the rocks to go out there.
They don't like these stones, they don't like the perimeter stones.
Okay, so, but there's still a, it drops down, maybe? So you're going to make those stones even with the pavement? Is that what you're trying to do?
Right, and we'll just regrade the area.
You're not regrading the area, you're just, because the trees will be destroyed if you fill the area.
No, no, I'm not filling it. We'll just grade it sharply right here along the edge, so that it's, we don't need the stones, that's all. They're, they're retaining a foot or so of soil along the bottom side, so we'll just take those out, and we'll just slope it instead of having the stones.
It seemed to me there was more than a foot drop off from the, the stones into the, to where the trees are. So I don't see how that works.
Well, if we, if we graded it two to one, even if it's a two-foot drop, it's only four feet into the circle, we'd have to go to grade it.
You're going to grade the circle towards the center?
No, we're going to grade it from the center down this direction. So we're going to go four feet into it and grade it down this way.
Four feet into where the-
Inside the circle of stone, because the stones are coming out.
The circle of stone is where the trees are, and if you grade in there, you're going to kill the trees.
Well, we're only going into it four feet, we're not going, we're not going to the center.
If you look at the pictures that we had, the, the trees are, some of them are at the very edge, they're not like in the middle there. There are six trees there, and some, most of them are located along the edge right next to the stone, but they're located below it, so, and that's not going to work.
Then the stones will have to stay on the bottom side.
You see those trees, that's not the base of the trees, the base of the trees-
Mm-hmm, I see.
Is considered to be lower, and see how the trees come right up next to the stone? So you can't really regrade.
No, you, you can't take them out of here. Those, they'll have to stay in here. The rest of the way around, they can come out.
All right, so you're going to, just on, we move the stones, so make them even with the-
Yeah.
Just on one side then? All right, I'm still a little-
It seems, I guess, when I was up there, I- I guess when I was up there, I recalled it being more of a pit, but it seems a lot more flat than it... In this picture, it seems a little less deep.
It seems to be a real pit to me.
Yeah.
But...
Small trees in it.
Anyway, so the idea is the stone wall's going to go away, all but for the...
We'll take out all of it that we can.
All that you can, so you don't have to fill the hole with dirt, basically.
But you're not going to fill in around the trees?
No, no, that would kill the trees.
Yeah.
Right.
Can we make this a condition?
I think we should let the fire chief review what the extent of it would be. Because I didn't actually go all the way up to the pit. When I look at it on the plan, it looks a lot...
You see, there's no oak tree in the middle. The oak tree's on the left, the opposite left end of the picture. And so between that oak tree and the tree you see, the largest cedar tree there, that's the narrowest point that the trucks have to get around.
Right.
Yeah, I guess I think part of the issue, it's just that this drawing isn't really accurate. I mean, the circle in the middle isn't really a circle. The tree isn't really the right tree. Like, what's really going to... What are we really getting in the end here? I mean, it looks to me like you guys are going to wipe out those trees based on this drawing.
Yeah, that's not the intention. We can go out and locate these smaller trees and get them on the plan and show you.
Yeah, and get the lodge tree where it belongs.
Put it where it belongs.
And the size of it. So the amount you're going to add looks very small because there's a huge drop off at the end there, and it's only a few feet that you're adding there.
We're adding five feet, yeah.
Oh, five feet?
Yeah.
And how is that going to be stabilized? Because that's a pretty big drop off.
It is, but that can support a two-to-one slope there, so we're not particularly worried about that. The grade...
Is there currently a two-to-one slope there now?
It's less than that.
Yes. All right, and on the driveway, what trees... My other concern is where you're doing the cut on the... The biggest cut on the driveway is at the end there is exactly where you're putting the other driveway, which means that that driveway has to go down further than it shows. You really need elevations also for that proposed driveway because I'm not sure how that will work. Once you lower the main driveway there, then what looks like a fairly even driveway now then becomes a slope driveway.
You're talking about Lot 7?
Lot 7, right. And now you've moved the house, so the driveway's right on top of the ledge. That's a lot of ledge.
Well, there is a lot of ledge. Now that I see it staked out, it was done on Friday. We'll rotate the house down and get it out of the ledge.
You can't...
I mean, we can move it down a bit.
I... Yeah. The house would be hanging over what's essentially a cliff. And also, I don't see how you can move it further over the cliff.
Okay. Then we take the rock out.
I mean, you know, there's a reason that these lots have not sold over the last number of years that this project isn't going on. And it's not... And nothing to do with the economy. It's this kind of lot is not suitable to put a house there. Maybe in California, people like houses overhanging cliffs and all that, but generally in New England, people want nice, flat lots, and this is far from a flat lot. And I think the layout you have here isn't going to encourage anyone to want to buy that and cut through that ledge and try to build a house up there. But I mean, that's... You know, the plan board's not in the business of telling you what's going to sell and what isn't going to sell, but this is really... To me, it's not very practical. But if you show us the slope of that driveway, it matches where you're cutting, and then... Now, you do have the trees here now, and there's a lot of stuff going on here. Only two trees have to be removed for the cut and fill on that.
We broke the shoulder area on the southerly side in here to save two trees, and again, on the northerly side to save another tree by that proposed driveway. The rest of them, we think we can save. We'll just... And we're going to break the shoulder, the two-foot shoulder at those points so we don't lose them. Then we know for sure that we just lose one tree for sure that's got to go.
And that's what, 12-inch red cedar that's labeled there? And that's right where the...
Oh, that's a... Yeah, 2-12-inch red cedar, yes.
My other comment would be, you're setting up an arbitrary building envelope where it's, you know, 20-foot wide buffer, no cutting of healthy trees. Well, you've already got a field there with trees around it. Why don't you just make that no-cut zone conform to what's there? I have no idea where that line that you drew agrees with where the trees actually begin at.
Yeah, it's not here. It's back here. We're just showing the difference between field and lawn. We expect this to be lawn.
So I mean, I don't see any need, since the house is going on the lawn section, that any trees should be removed. So I think the buffer area could be extended to where the trees actually are so that no trees get cut there rather than arbitrary 20 feet.
The 20 feet isn't that arbitrary. We're just simply providing the same open space that the neighboring subdivision has. This is open space here, so we provide it open space.
You already have trees growing around the edge now.
Mm-hmm.
Why don't you just set the boundary, the building envelope, where the existing trees are?
We need to get a location on that.
And you ought to do that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if you look at the trees that are existing there and set the no-cut zone inside of that, then we know nothing's going to get cut.
We'll field-locate that.
Any other commentary, questions?
I had a question with regards to the locking device for the... You mentioned a number of different options that you anticipate in sums. You mentioned that the device itself is not likely to be the option chosen, so what is... What are you proposing as the type of locking device?
A transponder for an automated gate is... Would be acceptable to the fire department, or a strap. They prefer a strap to lock it. They did not want a chain, and they did not want a physical lock on it.
Got it, okay. And did you say that the transponder is something that the... That you would be willing to do for this type of locking gate?
Well, that's up to the homeowner whether they choose to or not. It seems like a lot of trouble to go to for an easement that he doesn't really use very much.
But how would you be...
Well, if it's...
It's like a garage door. You're going to give a garage door clicker to the fire department just for this one gate?
Yes, yes.
Are you going to give one for every fire truck?
No, it goes to the fire department. Just like when we put a lock in, we give them one key to the lock.
Which is why the fire department really doesn't want to be holding keys. So they would prefer something like the strap or something that they could... Something that they could easily cut through in an emergency, but that a regular person wouldn't want to get out and do.
Now, when we say strap, what do we mean?
Like one of those plastic tie...
It's just a plastic hoop that goes from one side to the other on the two posts.
Okay.
We should specify a minimum thickness of that because they come in off sizes, and we want a substantial one.
Color, and color too, I think, right?
Can't you just weight the gate so that it always closes and then...
I think they want it to be a detriment to people using it just for convenience, enough so you wouldn't...
But I mean, you try to open it and it closes before you can get back to your car.
Right. It'd take two people to get through.
It's an option.
Okay. Anything else? So I... My only question, which I think is answered in the memo in front of us, but so when last we met, two weeks ago, there was a whole host of waivers, but those have all disappeared. Is that simply because we're... This is truly a shared driveway special permit?
Right.
I thought we had like dozens and dozens of waivers, and now we have four.
Right. Well, there are four waivers based on the submission requirements for shared driveway special permits, and that's the requirement for a complete landscape plan, showing all the trees on the entire property, the exterior lighting plan, a traffic impact study and stormwater report. Previously, the applicant had submitted a list of waivers that also reference your subdivision rules and regulations. That's not specific to shared driveway special permits, but the zoning by law references that the shared driveway should not circumvent the subdivision control law or your subdivision rules and regs. So it doesn't have a clear need for requesting waivers from a subdivision regulations, but you usually defer to them for guidance.
Got it, okay.
And so I think we had asked the applicant last time about the length of the driveway. Did you confirm that it's no more than...
It's exactly 500 feet.
Exactly 500 feet.
Okay.
Okay, I guess if there are no comments, no further comments from the... Never mind. Nope.
No, I mean...
Go.
I think we ought to get the final plan going up here. What about the trees? Yeah, what about the trees on Lot 7? You know, again, that's a very fragile kind of lot there with the big drop off towards the street. We want to make sure the trees aren't just cut down anywhere in that, you know, lot that's sort of destroyed. Right now, you have all the trees, and it's not visible from the street, and again, the building envelope should really be tightened so that they're not doing anything to disturb the slope and/or above a certain... Below a certain elevation and keep the trees in place there.
Is Summer a scenic drive down here?
Summer Street is a designated scenic drive.
Okay.
Yeah. And again, this is all on private property, so that doesn't apply to scenic drive. There's only shade trees alongside the drive. A different way people define shade trees, but none of these are shade trees because they don't reach the street.
They're not in the right-of-way in this summer street.
We generally insisted that they be in the right-of-way. The other towns say if it provides shade over the street, it's a shade tree.
Gotcha, okay. How deep is that setback on the Summer Street edge? The sort of building envelope setback? How deep... How far off the pavement or the roadway is that coming?
I'm going to say if you're referring to the house here.
No, I'm talking about the... Where you show the building envelope typical?
Oh, front yard setback is 40 feet.
Okay.
But clearly, you know, take so many feet below the house, anything... Anything you do in that slope there would affect...
Well, you're...
It almost looks like the house would be sliding down onto the street if...
Or we could probably take... We could terrace it for a couple of years.
But no, but it's natural, and it's staying there now. I'm just saying is, you know, we don't want to see all the trees cut down between there and the street.
I'm sure they wouldn't do it. It's a valuable lot, so we wouldn't care about the trees though.
And so can you, you know, set like the... I can't read what the elevation is, but saying nothing cut below 162 on that side or...
I'd rather go out there and locate the slope you're talking about, get it on the plan.
Yeah, could you do that?
So we can see what we're doing, yeah.
And set something reasonable where, okay, you have... You can put the house in, but you're not going to destroy the whole slope.
Right, right.
And then what else is going to be marked on the... You had mentioned before the buffer for the trees, which I too agree that it... To limit it to that. So what will that look like on the updated plan?
We're going to locate the actual tree line, which we don't have right now on the plan, so we can see where the trees are.
And then when you do update that as well, we mentioned that there's a few trees that are likely to be removed during the widening, but is it possible to also locate the... Any of the other ones?
Well, we actually have them all on the plan. We went out specifically to do that.
Okay. I thought when you had spoken a little bit earlier, I thought you mentioned that it wasn't definitive.
There's probably some fairly large trees right where the house is that I'm not...
Right, but marking the trees that have to go is kind of a wasted effort. What I'd rather do is spend my time on looking for ways to tighten this up. We'll see what's in there.
Okay.
And see if... Especially if we find a specimen tree or something, we'll get it on the plan.
All right. Me moving it closer to the driveway might have already saved a tree, as I recall, but I'm not sure. There are some fairly large trees right around there.
Mm-hmm.
Again, I mean, it's... A lot of people wouldn't be interested in buying that kind of house where it's up on a slope like that and, you know... People seem to like to have... Not me, but it seems people like to have houses that are surrounded by big, flat lawns, and it's got to be perfectly flat, and that's as far from there as you can possibly get, which is probably why you have trouble.
The backyard's pretty...
And the back one, and the back one, I don't see any problem. Yeah, that's the kind of lot people want. You've got exactly the opposite.
The back of 7, yeah.
Yeah, Lot 9 is a typical lot where... That people build on, but Lot 7 is the exact opposite.
He's saying this zone here is flat once you're on that side of the house?
Yeah, it's flat, but it's got a lot of trees there.
Right.
But you wouldn't want it removed. And that's the whole beauty of the place.
I think in general, the applicant has the right to do A and R lots, and the driveway coming straight up on that would be a lot more destructive than...
Well, yeah, we keep hearing that, but it'll also be almost impossible.
No, it wouldn't be impossible.
They would have to do switchbacks to get a driveway up.
Reversible.
Not close to impossible, but we'd prefer to do the common drive. That's why we're here. That's why we're working with you. But, yeah, it's perfectly doable, the A and R plan.
I just think if you laid out an A and R plan and said, "We'll build the driveway straight down to the street..."
No, you couldn't do that.
Yeah, you wouldn't. You'd have to... You'd have to destroy the lot to get the driveway and to get to the house, which...
I designed sites that are challenging like this. There are ways to do it.
There are ways to do it, but it would be so expensive, and then you'd be left with something so undesirable that I don't think that's a threat. But I mean, I'm willing to go along with this if we really tighten up the area of disturbance.
Mm-hmm. We'll get some more detail on Lot 7, and we'll pick up the tree line on Lot 9 in the rear.
That'd be great. Okay. Okay, do we have anyone from the public who'd like to make a few comments? If you'd approach the podium and state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And get the mic.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name's Joe Toffeloni. I live at 60... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I live at 65 Ridge Road with my wife and three daughters, and we were notified we're about within 300 feet of the property. We're opposed to the approval of a shared driveway. One of the things that I have in question is whether or not this whole shared driveway plan is not in effect an attempt to circumvent the subdivision control laws. When we met the last time... When we met the last time, the applicant had mentioned that they were coming forth with this plan because, actually to, to give the town a better option, they said their other option would be to put in a roadway and get a five lot subdivision into this, into this piece of property. I don't believe, I don't believe that the piece of property is subdividable with a road based on the subdivision, subdivision laws, because one of the requirements is if you put a, if you put in a new road and it is adjacent to either a local major or a local secondary street, that it has to be, it says the minimum right of way offset of a proposed street to an adjacent existing street shall be a minimum of 600 feet if the proposed street, the adjacent street, or the, or the street being intersected as a local major or local secondary street, which I think based on the definition in, of the towns, that, that both Westfield Street and Summer Street would fall into that category. And if you take, and from the, what's depicted in the town plans, they're showing the tangent would need to be 600 feet. If you take the tangent from that curve on Westfield Street and go to the end of their property line, which would, which wouldn't even factor in a 50-foot wide roadway, the, based on the plans that are being submitted by the applicant, there's only 404.7 feet. So you would, you would be barred from putting a road in based on what's in the subdivision control laws. Now, they are, the, this road, this shared driveway now would, would be in what they considered to be in the place of a roadway. This shared driveway is going to promote the development of this piece of property because one thing and, and one question that I do have, because when I look at what's required for the special permits, on, on section 6.1.4, it calls for a locust map of a, with, of a mile radius, which isn't, hasn't been provided and it's not on the waivers. The other thing that it asks for under 6.1.6.4 are topographic contours at two-foot integrals. I think intervals, if you put the topography, the two-foot integrals, intervals on this, on this plan, you're going to see how actually steep it is coming into the existing Lot 8 and the existing Lot 7. And, you know, I think I agree with the comment that Mr. Pauline off me, is that they are tough lots and I think there is a reason why they didn't, the original plan that they had set forth didn't pan out. And now this shared driveway, if it is in fact circumventing what the intent is of the subdivision control law, not only is it gonna circumvent that, but it's gonna promote whatever's gonna happen here. And that's something that I, I'd really like the town to check into and get a read on that because, you know, that, you know, I think that's an issue. And I, and I also, in looking at what they're, in looking at what they're doing, right now there's a single-family house on this piece of property. The, the current property owner bought this as a single-family residence, it's taxed as a single-family residence and it has been for this, for the entire time. And what I'm wondering is, is as far as allowing a shared driveway, is this really encouraging the most appropriate use of the land? Is it protecting the environment by putting more houses in there? Is it preserving the, the cultural and historical heritage? And is it also what's in the best interest of the neighborhood? I mean, we have, there, there are three of us that are here tonight and we're, we're three of the four people that are closest to this piece of property. And I don't know whether I would say that allowing, trying to facilitate somebody to develop the lot and it's open space right now, there's, it's a lot of wildlife in there, the deer come through there, there's some wetlands in there, there's a lot of birds, smaller animals in there too. So I, I'm kind of questioning the whole, this, the whole point behind this. So that I, you know, I just wanted to bring this to the, the town's attention and I, I am very curious, just, you know, as far as my own perusal of the subdivision rules and regulations, whether, whether it is in fact the case that there, a road couldn't be put in there anyways. So I, you know, I just wanted to bring that and, you know, for these reasons, you know, among others that were brought up at the last meeting, we're really opposed to having a special permit be granted by the town to allow the driveway to go through. And, you know, I request that the town give that some consideration. And one other thing too, that, that I'd also like to request is that for any decisions that do come down, that we get notified of it, which is one of the things that's in the, in the special permit. So, you know, because this is something that will affect us and the whole reason why we have the lot that we have is because of all the surroundings that we have and because there's a single house there and not because they're gonna develop the property. So, so I appreciate your consideration. Thank you, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Gillis. I'm the abutto with the easement. I think you've all been out to the property and I just want to reiterate some of the points made by my neighbor here. If you look at, under the rules and regulations of the subdivision of what a local street major is, 2.1.29.3, it says 1,500 cars a day. We get more than that by 10:00 a.m. That's a major cut through for Dover and Needham, through to 109, up Summer Street. Both Westfield and Summer would be qualified under the, both of those, based on the number of cars that go up and down there. I also think it is a scenic route, as you mentioned, because it does shade the street completely and the cutting down of the trees that you're talking about within 40 feet is gonna affect that as well. But getting back to the other, this is a clear circumvision, circumventing of the, the subdivision laws and rules. It doesn't meet the requirements. If you look under section 4.4, the street locations, particularly section 4.4.2, there has to be a minimum of 400 feet of proposed speed of adjacent street intersecting with a local major and a local secondary street. There's a reason why they're not putting a subdivision up there, it's because they can't. What they're doing is they're building a subdivision under the auspices of a shared driveway in an area that's a scenic route on a grade that we haven't seen the plans for, that has been pointed out repeatedly, so steep that it would be a real problem. In addition to which, under the new proposals of these driveways, they're not gonna be driveways that can gotten into very easily with, we talked about the last meeting, things such as landscaping trucks with trailers in the back. They're just gonna pull up, park on the side of the shared driveway and continue straight out the other side and overburden the easement that's already there that we discussed last time. Having a, some sort of mechanical transfer device that allows the opening of the door will not solve that problem. You just have to give it to your people who use the driveway and they're gonna continue to go up and down. I do think that if you're going to put a lock, not a lock, but some sort of chain or a plastic tie that can be cut, who's gonna maintain that? Right now, for the last 12 years, that gate's supposed to have been closed. It's been opened every single day for 12 years up until two weeks ago when we first had our hearing here. It's been opened and closed three times since then. Whoever keeps coming to the property closes it and the landscapers come in on Friday and open it so they can pull their trucks down the driveway. How, what happens when that tie gets cut? There has to be a way to keep that shut. It's, it's an unworkable situation. But most importantly, it's just a clear violation of the subdivision laws and it's just inviting this board to be into a lawsuit that none of the neighbors want to get into. I would ask that you would at least, at the very least, run this by town council before you would vote on it because I think, I don't do this type of law, but from a clear reading of it, it seems pretty clear to me that it, it can't be put in as a, because it doesn't comply with those regulations. I don't understand why the burden, we're burdening the easement of the subject properties for the emergency vehicles, why that shouldn't be taken care of by the one who's proposing the property. I also go back to what I said last time, is that there's been a basis of this whole argument by the proponent that has never been proven, that they can't sell the lots in the prior subdivision that was approved. That prior was never recorded with the registry, so the lots were never formed. It was never, ever given to a multiple listing. This, the whole proposal of this is we want to make more money, so we want to move the houses. There's nothing in the bylaws here that says the personal profit of the person making the house trumps that of what was just read to you about the safety of the community, the protection of the national environment, the protection of the wetlands, and the, to encourage the most appropriate use of land use throughout the town, particularly pastoral type areas there that are so rare now in the town. Having, I mean, using our driveway as the access point for ladder trucks, I don't see why, that, why that, that burden should be on the easement properties underneath. If it's unlikely that they're gonna use that driveway, then why have it? Why not just give up the easement? That takes care of all the problems. It's been requested several times and it's been refused because they want to use the easement for all the trucks that go up and down there, otherwise they've given it up by now. And again, as I mentioned last time, the application itself is, is deficient for the reasons that I pointed out. It violates many of the, the requirements of an applicant, doesn't have the correct name of the applicant, the applicant's name is not correct on that, the applicant's name on that is actually a company in New York, there's a different signature, so you show the applicant's name, it's not even the same as the signature, there's no address on the application as required. The questions that, about prior plans and everything else that were asked on that, a blank. I don't see how we would expect to follow through on what are very complex plans resulting certain trees that could be brought in down and not brought in down if we can't even get a correct application for the property. Thank you.
Have we, in the review of all this, all these various things by staff and other folks, I mean, are any of this abutters concerns? Are they-
All right, I mean, I have the original, we had the original copy of the application filed in the office that the applicant signed and I believe there is an address, or maybe it was, I have it here. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a post office box in Milton on the application.
The problem with the post office box today is not an address. The second, for purposes of bringing an action, if we disagree with the decision of wood, we need an address in order to serve the complaint. You can't serve a complaint for PO box, but the requirements of the application are quite clear with the street address. And it needs the answers to the questions that are asked about there rather than left blank. And it needs the applicant's name to match that of the person who signs it, so that we have one person signing and a different person applying.
I know we, we mentioned in the last meeting that there might, this, this process might benefit for some interaction between you all and the applicant. Has that been attempted?
I spoke with these gentlemen at length after the last meeting. I haven't heard from them in two weeks. I did hear from the hours sitting outside tonight.
I mean, unfortunately, I would not call myself an expert on the subdivision rules and regulations, but I mean, in terms of rendering, so I have an opinion about a, a quote unquote, clear sort of avoidance, let's call it, of doing a subdivision, you know, I, I don't know how to, I don't know how to address that issue. I mean, if-
The applicant could apply for a subdivision application. The planning board has the authority to waive any of its design requirements. However, a completely by right option is the A and R plan, which is three lots with frontage. And I believe that was a finding of the board last time, that this special permit allows these three lots to be created with only one curb cut at this location on Summer, Summer Street, so close to Westfield, that one driveway entrance from Summer Street is preferred over three separate ones that could be achieved through an A and R plan.
Yeah, and certainly a true subdivision drive would be vastly more impactful to-
Right. It would, 50 feet right of way is the requirement with 24 feet of pavement for a full subdivision road and then there's also the sidewalks and tree lawn. Also, we did receive comments from the fire department today, it was in your electronic packet, and the fire department, with the increase of the turnaround to five, 55-foot diameter, that allows the fire departments, their fire engine and their ambulance to make the turnaround. So they can make the turnaround for all their vehicles except for the full ladder truck would still need to go out that emergency access to Westfield, Westfield Street. However, if they can make the improvements to the circle, that would allow the other fire departments, still large vehicles, most likely the size of some delivery trucks, to be able to make the full turnaround without having to go out through Westfield, out the easement.
Can I just make a comment? I asked you that with the chief as well with, and he also said that as far as the ladder truck, if it ever had to walk there, he would like you to just back it up to Summer Street. That's what he said to us.
So if this, if the front of the lots nine and seven were wetlands, this would be a very good opportunity to make them build by using the shared. So, so the wetlands and/or a steep slope make it, make it, this an ideal parcel for a shared driveway?
Mm-hmm.
Separate-
Right, right.
And the impacts to the scenic road are-
Can I just be clear again? This is a three-lot A and R plan. That you do the special permit first and you file the A and R plan. We have legal frontage on Summer Street, we meet the square foot requirements. These are three four-man lots.
These are three, three what, I'm sorry?
Three four-man lots. It's an A and R plan. We're not filing subdivision.
No, I understand that, I understand that.
It's all about the access point. It's one access point versus three.
Right.
Which seems to benefit everybody.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me, if anyone else on the board cares to comment, I'd like to hear your comments. I mean-
Well, I just want to comment that, now I understand the shared driveway is a preferred method over the three curb cuts, but does this qualify for a shared driveway? Do we meet those, do we meet the standard?
Yes, I mean, the shared driveway, your rules and regulations or the zoning does not have specific standards for what the width has to be and the length. The last one that you approved was several years ago, for, across the street and down the street, the corner of Grove and Summer, and that was, I think, serving three or four lots and it's, I think it was 18-foot, feet of pavement, then also with one or two-foot shoulders.
Can you comment on your comment earlier about the shared driveway versus the subdivision?
Sure.
The question isn't whether is one better than the other. The question is, can you circumvent one to get the other? It's not, we're not saying that shared driveway may be better than a subdivision. What we're saying is that building a subdivision under the roots of a shared driveway, because they can't put a subdivision in there because they don't have the ability based on the rules. It has to be 600 feet. So what they're doing is they're circumventing the subdivision laws by trying to call it a shared driveway.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm just, I'm trying to compare what we have in the paged versus A and R plan, which seems to be a better plan from a environmental impact standpoint and from a, from a scenic road standpoint on Summer Street. And, you know, I, I definitely understand what you're saying and I wish I had a better grasp of exactly what a circumnavigation of that would really look like in a legal document, but I just, I really don't. I mean, the homeowner has, he has a right to attempt, attempt to do things with his own property and, I mean, from my perspective, he's done quite a bit of work to try to make this driveway as, as non-impactful as possible. This whole issue with the easement, it's very disappointing that they can't have, there can't be a conversation about that between you all and I don't really know what to do about it because it doesn't sound like anyone really agrees about how that's being used or why it's there. And that's, that's, I hang up because I'm hearing issues of safety, I'm hearing issues of fire access, which seem to be moot. access, which seem to be moot. I've heard no statements from the applicant about why it's so precious at all, just, I mean, I, you can, I'm not trying to be smart, I'm just like, you know, if it's such a sticking point, why is it there? If it's not needed anymore for any real reason?
It's really up to the owner, the owner who lives in lot eight, well, lives in all the property, but, yeah, lot eight, it's up to his decision.
So you're not, you're not the owner?
The applicant is not the property owner.
The owner is here tonight, Joe.
Okay.
He could speak to that.
Would you care to speak to that, or?
My English is not that well. The project had been approved 2005, and the only thing that was waiting for me to widen the driveway, and every time I come to renew the application, there are no objections. So, this is same plan we have, there's nothing has been changed, okay? Actually, Paul, with the engineer, come out with better idea for the plan, all right? And I didn't see any problem before, so I don't know why now, everybody coming like an army against me, and I'm very nice neighbor to everybody, I'm trying to be nice, and they're saying truck going up and down the easement, never, okay? Even, you know, what I call UPS or the other trucks, maybe one or twice, what I call the landscaping guy went through there, and I told him, please, don't pass there no more, okay? And this is what happened. And actually, right now, I'm not using the easement much because I'm not staying here that much, I'm traveling six, seven months a year, so I'm not using easement, and my son's the only one in the house. So, this is, this is what the situation is. So, I appreciate, you know, your concern on that, and, you know.
So, why do you even need the easement at all?
The reason I bought the house, because I want to develop the land when I have money. So, when I have money now, I want to develop the land, and, you know.
But not, but, why do we need, why do we need easement at all?
That's, that was the question, sorry. Why, yeah.
This easement is, this easement seems to be a big sticking point, and I, it doesn't
seem to have a purpose.
The easement's been there before I bought the house, and the town proved it. So, why I want to move it right now, all right? So, I like to have it the way it is, this is it.
Well, you know, I went out there and looked at it, and it's like...
Been through by the town, so...
The easement is the nicest easement I've ever seen, it has, it has little lights on each side of it, leading up to a gate. You would assume that it was an extension of the driveway, in fact, from just looking at it, I mean, I, it was actually more difficult to get up the driveway and to try to, I had to do a multi-point turn to get turned around to get out of there, and there was this, but then there's a road that goes down, so I don't understand, it seems like that is the thing that is the sticking point here. If that were gone, with the fire department saying, we don't need that, so if it's not needed for emergency vehicles, and if it would be the thing that would get everyone to agree, why not just get rid of it?
You know, sometime, you know, I use it like two, three times a year or four times a year myself, all right? So, it's easy for me, when I go down the supermarkets, that I go around all the way down the house, and I shoot straight to the supermarket from there, you know? This is what I use it for, sometime.
Okay, so we're going for never using it, using it quite a bit?
Yeah, so someone, someone here is not telling the truth about the easement use, so, you know, I don't know who it is, and honestly, it's not really for us to figure out, but it's something that seems to should be figured out before we make a motion on approving this plan.
I don't think easement was the only issue, I think one of the neighbors spoke about a house being built a lot night, who didn't want a house a lot night, so.
He doesn't have a lot of standing there, so, I'm not worried about it.
I think, well, if you've been on the board, so you know what the real story is, we haven't been here since 2005, I know it's the first time I've been here since 2005, because it was always the other plan that was approved, and we didn't come here since we went there that time, and at that time, we were told the easement would be given up, it wasn't given up, that was a precondition of the 2005 plan.
Give us the microphone.
Never, I never, I never...
One at a time, Joe, hold on.
I mean, you can look at your own minutes, but you're all on the board, so you know who comes up here, none of us, none of these three neighbors have been here in 12 years. They only came in here because the plan was changed. We came here last time, there was a promise made outside on the easement, it didn't come through, shame on me for not getting it in writing, and so we haven't in 12 years once come up here and said that the prior plan with the three houses down on the, on the street was unacceptable, because we, you know, you guys approved it. He, though, decided not to go and have it recorded, and it's no longer valid, this is a new plan. And this plan puts more burden on the easement, because particularly with the house up back, with the shape of the driveway, that landscaper's going to pull right up the driveway, park next to the house's driveway, and just go continuing straight right out the other end. He doesn't want to give up the easement for exactly what he said, he wants to use it, not just him, but everybody up there. And as long as there's an easement, we can't tell which vehicles come from which home. And so, that's, that's the safety issue. It's an overburdening of an easement by having these, and if he does move out and he sells the house, how are we to tell the people in the other homes whose landscape, none of these landscapers are going to go up these driveways? They're going to park at the end, leave it facing straight ahead, just like the engine would for the fire department, and they'll just ride their mowers right up the driveway. It'd be death trying to get up those two other driveways. So, that's the purpose, it's quite clear for the easement, is so that it can be overburdened and everybody can use it, because it's not given up. If it was given up, we could lock it, or put a tape on there for the fire department so they could use in emergencies, but without that, you know, we can't take that safety issue. And you've come down that driveway, you see how steep it is, and how easily it comes down, and how we have the wall in the driveway, you get an 11-year-old coming out from that wall on his bicycle, he gets picked off, you've got the wall on the right with our neighbor's house, dogs come across, anything, it can be pretty dangerous, particularly with, not just motor vehicles, like car vehicles, but the trucks with the trailers, and those are the real concerns.
Well, there's a lot of murk in the water in this one still, after two weeks of work. I definitely appreciate the applicant's work on this driveway, I think this is the best solution, moving through this frankly bizarre easement issue. I don't pretend to understand, and I would like to suggest that we entertain a motion that suggests we allow some more time to get some clarity on the history of that easement, get some clarity from town council about this whole interaction of the subdivision law versus what may or may not be approved here, and also clean up these few, the tree, the sort of tree items we discussed earlier, and I, you know, I would like to get beyond this, some of these things, but I don't think we're really ready to...
I don't think we need a motion, we just continue this hearing. There's no trespassing sign, what is that going to say on the easement?
There are already, there's this one at the beginning of Summer Street, and then there's one at the end of the easement.
And what does it say?
No trespassing.
All right, so, what about a sign, and what, did the last one have something about a sign at the beginning of that easement, the beginning of the driveway, right at the circle, which, which says specifically, it's for, you know, in your, the house number for lot eight only?
Yes.
And that would...
It's the access and residence at lot eight.
Right, so...
It's 480, 480 Summer Street.
So, if there was a sign there, there should be a sign there that said, you know, access for 480, Summer Street only. I don't think the fire department needs to be told that they can use it, then, that would be something that would, that would help. Plus the, plus the requirement, not only that, you know, there'd be a plastic strap there, but the requirement that it be maintained, so if it's removed, it's going to have to be replaced. That's, of course, that's an enforcement problem, but that's the best we can do. I think those two items is about the only thing we can do.
Yeah.
I will, I will put the sign, it's only emergency vehicle that passes through the...
Well, well, Paul, we're right up the sign, and we'll get the exact wording for you.
Okay. With all due respect, the sign's been up for years, it does no good.
Well, no, the sign and the, and the plastic strap.
And the approval to the driveway and the turnaround.
So that they can turn around, the fact that they can turn around now should make, make a difference.
Mm-hmm.
And then, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, so if a, if someone, if the gardeners for lot nine come down that road, and they park along that road, they're actually trespassing, because they're on lot eight, even though they're working on lot nine, and they are trespassing that whole time.
Yeah, and we've agreed to incorporate language in the deed of the sale of lots seven and nine, that they replace them from using the easement at all, only for the Summer Street access.
The problem is the rotary in the middle is the peak, so as they come up, we can't see any of the property from where we are, so which lot they're working on really doesn't matter, as long as it's that configuration, they're going to come up, they're going to come down, and we won't go to say, you are lot eight, or lot nine, or lot seven.
No, the landscapers won't be allowed to go at all.
Right.
It's just the owners of 480 Summer Street.
Right, but the problem comes down to policing. Who's going to police it? And what do we do about abuses?
It comes down to any kind of decision, you know, the same thing, it's obviously enforcement.
Hi, I'm Julie Gillis, I live at 136 Westfield Street.
Can you, would you mind hitting the mic? Thank you.
I'm Julie Gillis, I live at 136 Westfield Street. We were here two weeks ago on a Tuesday night. I was doing mulching on Thursday afternoon, when the flatbed truck with all of the gardening equipment came down the driveway. The gate, as we said at the last meeting, was open at the time, and is always open, so they came down the driveway, mysteriously, the gate got closed. Then, last Friday, again, I was doing some gardening, and the gate was closed, I saw the landscapers doing the lawn. Half an hour later, I went to pick up my son from school, and the gate is open, and the landscapers are gone. This is the type of thing that we're talking about, like, why should we have to be doing the policing? The gate is open all the time, it's used all the time. Thank you very much for allowing me to comment.
I guess, I, we definitely, I definitely appreciate your anecdote, and I just, what it brings to mind is that this issue with the gate and the easement has nothing to do with this project, like, has nothing to do with whether there's one, two, three, four, five, six houses here, so this is an issue that you guys need to resolve somehow.
It does have to do with the program, because it has to do safety.
You have, you have the problem now, so I'm not, you see what I'm getting, you see what I'm getting at, like, yeah.
Trifling the program.
Right, I don't think you're necessarily going to triple the problem, you're not, you're not going to create more grass, you're not going to create more grass to be cut, or more landscape to be dealt with, so.
If there's three homes there, there'll be three landscapers.
I mean...
There's three homes in a previous decision of 2006.
Sure.
That was approved.
The previous decision, they had the option to record that, and they never did, okay? So that, that decision is off the table, and one interesting thing about the new submission, which adds even more murk to this whole easement issue, the original, the plan that we viewed last week on that easement, it stated emergency vehicles only. Now, they revised the plan, and this time, the easement, I mean, that driveway out says emergency vehicles only and for lot eight. So obviously, that easement is very important to the people that live up there, because they added that on after the, the prior submission, and on the original plan that came, that was, that was submitted, that you did act on, all the houses were on the Summer Street end. There was nothing, so it was, it was actually conducive for anybody that was doing anything, they had to go back out to Summer Street, unlike, unlike what you have now, because the, the, where that circle is, those, if you compare the two plans, that lot cut over, so the houses were there, it was a shorter distance to just go right back out to Summer Street. So, and, you know, they, they may have an approval not required, but if they aren't allowed to have the shared driveway, this shared driveway is also going to greatly reduce the developmental cost of this piece of property, and it may be at the detriment of other people. And I'm not sure if that's what the intent is of issuing a special permit, because to get into, to, and obviously, one of the problems is, is the way that other plan was, is the driveway was cutting across one of the, was cutting across the lot that was, was on the right-hand side, so what, it wasn't something that was conducive to have somebody buy to build on, because if they had, and it, and it was approved in 2006, in 11 years, I'm quite sure somebody with as hot as all the properties in the town of Westwood, somebody would have bought those lots and built on them. So there was obviously something deterring them from, from doing that. And that was a plan put together by Beals and Thomas, who did High Ridge Estates, so they were very familiar with, with the area. Thank you.
Okay. I don't know if I...
Well, speaking of signs, are there going to be numbered signs at each of the three driveways that are coming off of the shared driveway? Showing the number?
At Summer Street?
No, you have it at Summer Street, but as, as you go up?
Yeah, each driveway.
Beginning of each driveway?
Yes.
Could we add that to the plan? And so that would be directing people, the lot nine, whatever number that ends up being, they'd be directing them down there, and when they'd be coming back, they're heading towards Summer Street, they're not heading towards that access road.
And just to echo the point about looking into the subdivision versus the shared driveway, as far as the, that distance to another major, sub-major road, I think, I think that's something that we should look into.
Well, but it's not, it's not a, really a matter of subdivision versus shared driveway, it's A and R plan versus shared driveway.
No, but as far as the spirit of a subdivision, there's a reason why you don't want a road to be close to another road, so you're starting to add more houses onto a plot, so you're starting to increase that capacity.
You have something to fill?
So, the applicant does not need additional frontage to develop, typically, typically a subdivision that requires a road is created to provide access to additional lots.
Extra frontage, yeah, right.
Right. So, the applicant does not need that. The second thing is that providing additional curb cuts provides additional points of conflict for traffic, so, you know, the, I understand what you're saying, we, that's why we recommended the 20-foot wide road or access way and such, to make sure that there's sufficient passage, but, but the, I think, I think in line with Steve said, is you got an A and R lot development versus, you know, one, one access point for the three lots.
Yeah, and they have what, about 550 feet of frontage for the whole thing?
It seems like it, yeah.
Well, if I, and if I understand correctly...
I'm going to read this very small lettering here.
At least, yeah, at least. Question, like, with, with the A and R, if they...
500 feet from major?
You would still have, lot eight would have the full use of the easement, because right now, lot eight has, it's not emergency vehicles only, it's, they can, he can do what he wants, so with an A and R, yes, you'd be able to sub, you'd be able to divide this into three lots, and lot eight would be able to keep going down that shared driveway. So it feels like there, there's lots of room for negotiation here, it isn't, if this, yeah, if they filed the A and R and continued to use that driveway out the back, and then just put, use the two things here, then everybody would be worse off, and all, but, I don't know, so.
If we A and R it, you're looking at the same three lots, it really doesn't change. Lot nine uses this driveway, lot seven gets a driveway that comes in right here, and lot eight will get a driveway that'll switch back and come up to here, and it also has access through its easement, so that does perhaps in some conditions encourage lot eight to use that easement access more, but that's his right to do so.
Lot seven, you'd need a switchback on that if you...
No, no, we wouldn't, Steve, we would flip the garage to the other side, come in the, come in the high side, come across the front and into, front load the garage, we could do it, trust me.
Garage could also be at a lower level.
Trust me, Steve, we can do this.
Yeah.
And you can buy that lot if you want.
No, I wouldn't buy it that way. The whole front of, the whole front yard would be a driveway coming up.
I'd like... All right. Um, I'd like to continue this at our next meeting.
Your next meeting's June thirteenth, which is three weeks away. Three weeks from tonight.
Remember last time, it was not convenient for us to be here tonight, but we came here tonight to expedite theirs, because we're not, we're away for our twentieth anniversary. I would ask that if you continue one more time. Given that we're here tonight, um, work-related stuff, everyone's supposed to be here tonight, but I came, so I would ask that it not be the next meeting, but the meeting after that.
The meeting, the second meeting in June is June twenty-seventh.
It's two weeks, two weeks.
Two weeks after the meeting on the thirteenth.
All right. Um, is it an actual motion, or is it just a statement?
Right. I think you motioned to continue the hearing, and you should announce a new date and time.
Could I ask for a motion from someone to continue this?
I'll make a motion to continue, uh, four eighty Summer Street special permit till June the twenty-seventh at, at seven o'clock in this room?
Well, I, I give up, all right? I mean, we can, we can have the applicant, or we can have the, the butters. So, I mean, I'm happy with the next meeting. Approach the dais.
Even if not, it's gonna prove the shared driveway, I'm not giving up the easement. So, Mr. Gillis, he wants to talk much as he want. I'm not giving up the easement. So whatever the board wants to do is fine with me. I'm willing to put a sign, and I'm willing to put in the deed who's buying the lot, nobody allowed to go through that, the easement. Okay? And this is, this is what, this is it, you know? So if it's gonna be here, it's not here, I'm not giving up the easement, no matter what.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the hearing was continued to Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, seven P. M. in this room.
Oh, wait.
I'm not gonna be able to make it to the twenty-seventh.
What would that mean for us?
He needs four votes to approve, unless you revise a motion before everyone leaves?
No.
Special permit vote, we need four out of the five.
Yes, they need four out of the five.
If we start having folks not able to attend, really, if we do this, we have, we need four of them.
Well, you're available the...
June thirteenth.
June thirteenth, though, right?
Well, is that kind of the nature of this process?
The nature of this process, unfortunately, yeah.
Every day that passes makes it more difficult.
Yeah. I mean...
That's why we agreed to this board meeting, that we would be...
Well, right. I mean, and you're, and you're not the only butter, and you're not the only interested party, so for us to operate around just you is a little unfair to the applicant as well, I must, I gotta say, so.
I'm just saying that we bent to be here tonight. I don't see why the board can't reciprocate. We're gonna be in Italy, we won't be in the country, we don't have anybody else who can speak on our behalf. Why, this can't wait two more weeks after that.
Right. Well, the concern is, we won't have the board, we won't have the full representation of the board here.
I mean, you received this application in March. It's up to the board. I don't think you can work around everyone's summer schedules.
It's been, again, but also, it's been how many years?
But with a new applicant, though.
So who's in a hurry here? Really?
We're already grand two more weeks.
So July eleventh is the next one after that.
Actually, you haven't officially picked it, but if everyone, if July eleventh works for everyone?
All right, so do we need to move to reconsider?
Yes, you should, um, consider the motion.
Well, just, yeah.
Consider hearing date.
Move to, to, what?
Continue the public hearing.
Send the previous motion, and make a new motion for, for July eleventh.
Do I hear, is that, is that your motion, or is that a suggested, a suggestion?
July eleventh?
Yeah, either way.
Tuesday, July eleventh?
It's not the date we prefer, that's for sure. We prefer to do it in June, but...
Abby, what are the, what would be the basis that we would need to state to decline the special permit? Don't we need to state?
Yeah.
We still don't know what we're going at.
We'd either have to find it, is...
A finding.
Yeah, we need more information about the legal consequences, or to find that it's not in the, it's not in the character of the neighborhood, or something.
Right.
Well...
Sorry, I'm just making sure that I'm actually here July eleventh. All right, I have a motion, a, a, a motion to rescind a motion for continuance to the twenty-seventh of June. Do I hear a motion to continue this hearing to this eleventh of July twenty seventeen?
Almost. I mean, it can make one or two motions, doesn't matter.
Right. All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Where's my agenda? I lost my agenda. I got so excited, I lost my agenda.
I don't have an extra one.
Ah, okay. Um, item number six, approval not required, A and R Plan ninety-one Greenhill Road and fifty-one Millbrook Road, such as map twenty-seven lots one thirty-one, thirty-one.
Just make the announcement, I just wanted to let you know, Ellen, you know, okay, okay. Okay, okay, the next one. Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure you know that items four and five were withdrawn.
I'm sure this was so enjoyable to watch, the Summer Street discussion, too, so.
Okay. Um, well, you can imagine how late it would be if we had to start those now. So you have received... It's not the size you would normally get, but the registry does accept varying size plans.
Yeah, saves those Mylar trees.
So, um, there's two lots here. There's ninety-one Greenhill Road on the corner of Millbrook. There's another property on Millbrook. What this plan is doing is swapping a little bit of land. This little triangular piece here, this lot line's being shifted over a foot and a half, and then there's a note that this lot line, this little parcel here will be combined with the Greenhill lot, and this hundred and eighty square foot parcel will be swapped in the back and combined with lot fifty-one. That way, both lots are maintaining the same overall square footage, because they're both undersized. Yep, so... Yep, the lot line right here is existing, and then this line's gonna be created, combined with this one, and this little portion's gonna be combined with fifty-one, because they're both undersized, and it's important that they maintain the same square footage. So Millbrook has the existing, over the existing required frontage in the SRC zone, and, um, Greenhill does not, but it's existing, so it's not changing the frontage. Essentially, this is, you can find that this is not a subdivision plan under subdivision control.
Okay.
So we have, and then we have the Mylar plan in four paper copies. Yes.
Make a motion to accept the plan.
Endorse the plan yet, or? Okay. Do we hear a motion?
I just made the motion.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, who seconded? Brian?
Wait a minute, which one is the Mylar?
The second.
Here you go.
You need black?
No, 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 this, the first one, oh, yeah, yeah.
I got black.
So the Mylar always needs to be signed with these things.
That's the second copy, for some reason, of this one. That one needs the Mylar.
That really does remind me of that whole exercise with...
Yeah. It's frustrating. Very frustrating. Because the solution's right there. Just reach out and grab it.
The zoning board applications at this point in time.
All right. I guess as he's finishing. Um, all right, we were gonna talk, oh, Brian gets back, but we're gonna...
I can do both.
Brian left, though.
Oh, that makes it difficult.
So, meeting dates, what do you have now on your, now that we're doing, we're making them on the fly by request, apparently, so.
All right. July eleventh, you picked, and then, um, one of you. Now...
July twenty-fifth.
That didn't work for two people, I think. Um, Trevor and Mike were out of town that week. And...
All right.
So I don't, I thought maybe we could schedule one based on that for the eighteenth as a backup if needed, and that way, if nothing comes, the week before, we would know.
Eighteenth of July.
Yep, July eighteenth, so just save July eighteenth as a backup. But if we don't have any items, because it's only one week apart, we can cancel that. Okay. And then, only one Tuesday in August seemed to work for everyone, at least that I heard from, August twenty-second.
What about August eighth?
August eighth.
Twenty-second's the only one that I'm away.
Oh, um, so I think Trevor and Dave were away the first week.
No, I'm, I'm away the week of the, the last week, the week of, the week before Labor Day.
The twenty-third?
Oh, the twenty-eighth, okay.
I'm away the first week of August.
Oh, sorry, it was Mike and, um...
Why don't we do this one at a time? Who's, so who's, who's available on the fifteenth?
Of August?
Yeah.
Yes, I am. I'm available.
There we go.
All right, no, I know what the problem was, that I'm gonna be away, and Nora, and Nora's gonna be away.
On the fifteenth?
Yeah. I'm sorry, actually, I'm gonna be away the eighth and the fifteenth, and so will Nora, so there's...
So when you say it didn't work for everyone, you're including yourself in that.
Unless you wanna...
So the twenty-ninth, we have, who's not here the twenty-ninth?
Me.
Trevor.
And then who's not here the, oh, the twenty-second?
Brian's not.
And it's hard, we don't, we don't know what will be here, so we don't know if we can survive on four, or...
So the sticking point is, we can't find anything in August.
Right. I mean, if you have...
Who can't make the eight, more than one person?
Um, staff, yeah, right.
I won't be too far, I mean...
Oh, staff?
Staff cannot make that. So if you...
How about August first?
I don't know if you wanna meet without any staff, um, Janice.
What's the matter with August first?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in North Carolina.
On August first?
Yep.
Okay, so that's no good. So we're back to square one.
I mean, it sounds like the weeks of the twenty-second, sorry, weeks of the, weeks of the twenty-first and twenty-eighth, we're only one man, only one man down, right?
Right. Yes, so you could, um, you're allowed, board members are to miss one hearing of a continued hearing, and then you could watch the tape, or, but then if items are, um, finished in one meeting, you just wouldn't be a part of it. So it would, you'd want it to be something that didn't need a supermajority.
Well, if Dave wants to do the meeting on the twenty-second, with the twenty-ninth, go away?
I'm away the twenty-ninth, yeah.
That's right. My first thought was the twenty-second, too, because at least it gets a little further away from, the previous meeting was July eighteenth. That's getting pretty far, over a month.
All right.
Twenty-second sounds good.
And actually, what's great about tape is you can watch it and fast-forward. Sweet.
Right, so for any items that...
I would never skip George's, Steve Olinos'.
But you, I mean, you can hear the voices, they just sped up.
Okay, so is it okay if the twenty-second, and if something comes up where we think we need everyone there, we could continue it to a September, the next meeting date? And this was it, okay. And then, um, September fifth and nineteenth is a suggestion, based on, because the FinCom will start getting ready for town meeting, usually on the second and fourth Tuesday. So that leaves a... Is the day after Labor Day also.
It's fine for me.
Okay. And the nineteenth is okay, too? Okay. October third and twenty-fourth, and this is where, I don't have the FinCom's final schedule, but typically, they'll hold the public hearings for all fall, um, fall town meeting articles are usually on the third Tuesday, or that third Monday and Tuesday. So that's why I'm thinking the first and the fourth. Okay. And then...
The first and the fourth of?
October, October, um...
Third and...
I'm sorry, I was thinking October...
Third and twenty-fourth.
October third and October twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, and then the FinCom will most likely have their hearing on October seventeenth. But we don't know that for sure yet.
When is town meeting? November?
November thirteenth. According to the charter. So they haven't scheduled it yet, but, um, so then I would suggest for November, November eleventh to be the week before town meeting.
What? You mean, you mean the seventh?
Sorry. November seventh, yes.
That's also election day.
Yes. So this room will be used.
I guess only if there's an election, yeah, like, um...
Wait a minute, is there any?
If, if there's no election, what about, or if there is an election, usually you'll meet the Monday before, just to have...
That's right.
Bless you.
What's the matter with the 14th?
Just because it's the day after town meeting.
We, for November 6th?
Is November 6th okay for people, Monday? Okay. All right.
Well, why can't we just do in November, there's no election on November 7th?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so why don't we do the 7th?
The 7th.
7th unless there's an election, okay. All right. Okay.
I don't know, the governor is the following year.
Okay.
The 2018.
Okay, Tuesday, November 7th. Okay. And then the last Tuesday in November, the 28th? Is that where you're not meeting the week right before Thanksgiving? Okay. And then lastly, I would suggest Monday, December 11th? Because Tuesday is the start of Hanukkah. And if you can be okay with one meeting in November?
In December.
December.
I think we weren't, I think, I think we wore Abby out.
We meet the week before.
Right. I just thought, because then it's, yep, it's only one week in between. And you wanna avoid meeting the week of Thanksgiving. Okay? All right. Okay, thank you.
What were the, what were the dates in July?
July 11th and 18th? I, I will send everyone out, we'll send everyone out the dates as a reminder if you like.
Okay, great work, everybody.
Thank you.
Do we have any decisions or hearings to sign?
Nope.
Are there any committee reports to speak of?
No.
Steve, we have MIPC on Thursday, right?
Right, MIPC council meeting on Thursday in Boston. You going?
Okay. Anything further from anyone? I guess I'll make a, I'll do a quickie. Oh, yeah, are there minutes to approve?
Yes. February 27th was your joint meeting, where you really just attended the Board of Selectmen meeting and you didn't have any comments. So I just based those minutes off of the Board of Selectmen's minutes. The March 6th was also a joint meeting where you attended the FinCom hearing. And then April 11th was in your packet.
I did not have a chance to read 411, unfortunately. Is anyone else having any?
I did.
Commentary?
So I move that we, we accept February 27th and March 6th.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote is unanimous.
Okay. Oh, yeah. You can abstain, Brian can abstain.
Sorry, I probably have one abstention.
Okay.
Okay. I'll do a quick plug for the Islington Task Force. There was a presentation by the proponent, was it last, was it last Tuesday?
Right, last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday. It was informative. There was not, they didn't accept any public comment during the meeting, so it was a little, I don't know. Informative, I guess is about it.
It was really the applicant presented his proposal for option 6. In the task force, the chairman of the, or chairperson of the task force presented the task force recommendation for option 6 with conditions. And then the Board of Selectmen asked some questions and they'll be continuing, and then they'll, Wednesday, Wednesday, May 31st, they'll be meeting at Thurston at 7:00 PM. And that's where they'll have the public comment. So that's where they're encouraging people attend that meeting to ask questions and provide comments.
Yep. He did, one thought, one thing I thought was interesting, he made mention, Mr. Pichuzi Ella made mention that he is looking to acquire one more piece of property, I think, the, the one that's kind of behind the parking lot-ish, is that right?
Right, so that was one piece of new information. He had been, reached out to the property owner in this landlocked parcel that's behind, residential parcel that's behind the municipal lot. And that he was, I think, just secured or just purchased or that property.
He didn't say, I don't think it was...
Or purchased or was in the process of, or they had...
I think he might've used the secure...
Secured.
I can't remember.
Or under agreement, maybe?
But not purchase.
Okay. I don't remember, I don't remember how...
And the, he mentioned it was for green space. He used that as a rationale.
But that wasn't yet included in any design proposal, but it was presented as this may become, could become part of any project that moves forward because it was adding land that a project could have access to.
Okay. All right. Can I hear, can I hear a motion to adjourn? There are no other comments or questions?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.